Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We want to welcome everyone to the September fifteenth meeting of the Merced City Council. We're going to begin with an invocation from Minister Zachary Pitcher from the Central Presbyterian Church in Merced, and then after that, Council Member Rani Deanda will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Pitcher.
Good evening, everyone. One of the things that I appreciate about the city of Merced is that it's full of people of different faiths and different ways of viewing God. And so before I lead us in a prayer, I want us to take a moment of silence to offer you space to pray however you pray. If you're somebody here who does not believe in God, I want to encourage you, take this moment to remind yourself of the things that you appreciate about Merced. And then in a moment, I'll close us with a prayer. Our God, we thank you for this city, for the many people who work so tirelessly to make it a great place to live. God, we thank you for our police officers, for our firemen, who work so tirelessly to keep our city safe. We thank you for our schoolteachers and administrators who invest many hours of their lives in teaching our youth. Help us, God, to be a city that raises up kids well. Thank you for our public servants, public defenders, and for this, our city council. We pray your blessing over this evening, that all that is said would be constructive, that you would give wisdom to those who are making decisions, that you would help us, God, to move forward together as a city in a way that makes this a place for all people to thrive. We pray in the name of God, amen.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Deanda.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the freedom of justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Deanda. Thank you, Zach. Good to see you.
Agenda item D, roll call. Councilmember DuPont.
Present.
Deanda.
Present.
Harris.
Present.
Smith.
Present.
Jean.
Here.
Mayor Protim Boyle.
Here.
And Mayor Serrato.
Here.
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to remind the audience that if they wish to address the city council, they must submit a green request to speak form located at the podium in the back of the chamber. Additionally, citizens can submit public comment to the city council electronically no later than 1:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Comments received before the deadline will be sent to the city council and will be part of the record and will be mentioned as part of the written petitions and communications portion of the agenda, and they will also be posted on the city's website. Material may be emailed to cityclerk@cityofmerced.gov, and any correspondence received after 1:00 PM will be distributed to the city council and retained for the official record. Also, for those audience members who wish to hear the council meeting translated into Spanish or Mongol, please let our interpreters know.
Hola, mi nombre es Rita. Si ustedes necesitan servicios de interpretación, yo voy a estar en la parte de atrás del auditorio. Gracias. In accordance with Government Code 54952.3, it is hereby announced that the city council sits either simultaneously or serially as a public financing and economic development authority, parking authority, and/or successor agency to the redevelopment agency. City council members receive a monthly stipend of $500 by charter for sitting as a city council, and the mayor receives an additional $100 each month as part of the adopted budget and resolution 2024-78. The public financing and economic development authority, parking authority, and successor agency to the redevelopment agency receive no compensation. Agenda item E, report out of closed session?
There is no report out of closed session.
Agenda item F, ceremonial matters. F1, certificate of recognition to Liliana Hawkins for being a recipient of the Sue and Harmon Burns Scholarship through the Junior Giants Program requested by Mayor Serrato.
Thank you, Jennifer. If we could invite Liliana to come up in front of us right here and bring your friends and family too if you want, and everybody, please embarrass her. Give her a nice round of applause. This was an important one for me, being a Giants fan. My whole life, I wore my, did my best to wear Giants colors tonight for you too. But tonight, we want to honor Liliana Hawkins, who's already in eighth grade, eighth grade, and already doing incredible work to be a great ambassador of our city and to do so much, already building a life of service and building a life of giving back to others and working hard to create a better community. So, in the new, in the paper, I'm going to hold this for a second. Paper did a really nice article about her, so I know you saw it, but talked about how she was one of the Sue and Harmon, was awarded the Sue and Harmon Scholarship from the San Francisco Giants, making her the first student from Merced to ever receive this honor. And this is awarded to students who demonstrate exceptional, exceptional academic achievement, leadership, and dedication to their community. And it goes on and on to talk about a lot of her accomplishments. So, we want to welcome you here tonight, really recognize all your incredible accomplishments. We have two certificates for you there, and we just, again, want to congratulate you for all your great work in the community and continued looking forward to all the great, great things you're going to do throughout your life. So, give you a chance to say a few words if you like. Really, now's really the chance to embarrass you right now. You got to say something. You sure? Flor, you want to go up and say something? You're not shy over there. Thank you.
Just want to say thank you. You know, Liliana is a really hard worker. She's trying to do her best. Just appreciate, you know, where she comes to her hometown. But yeah, do you want to say thank you?
Thank you.
We have a proclamation for you, which is, whereas Liliana Hawkins was selected as the recipient of the Sue and Harmon Burns Scholarship through the Junior Giants Program, and whereas the Sue and Harmon Burns Scholarship is given to four of over 200 youth applicants in California, whereas the Sue and Harmon Burns Scholarship is a prestigious scholarship that honors youth who demonstrate outstanding character, leadership, and academic excellence, whereas Liliana Hawkins has participated in the following: cadet, Girl Scout, and Troop 3007, Junior Giant Softball Program, competitive soccer for Merced United. Hear that? It was Fernando. Merced United. Sorry about that. And then, and participates in her school's sports, including track, soccer, and band, whereas Liliana Hawkins has received honor roll all year in addition to all the extracurricular activities. Now, therefore, I, Matthew Serrato, Mayor of the city of Merced, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the recognition of Liliana Hawkins, the recipient of the Sue and Harmon Burns Scholarship, and continues to be a role model in our community. Thank you.
received emails from Kimberly Alfaro, Delia Neer, David Ferry, Rakish Palé, Charlene Murray, Myra Mesa, two members from the public, Elza Mangan, Rose Marie McCollum, Rich Edison, Manny Rivera, Richard Forden, Joel Swella, Brian Roya, Steve Rovia, and Ben Munson regarding Agenda item L1. The clerk's office also received an email from Andrea Uribe regarding Agenda item L2. The emails were received by the 1:00 PM deadline. They were sent to council and posted on the city's website. Any emails received after the 1:00 PM deadline will be sent to council. Agenda item H, public comments. Members of the public who wish to speak on any matter not listed on the agenda may speak during this portion of the meeting and will be allotted three minutes. The mayor may propose a further limit to the time available for all speakers at the discretion of the city council in order to accommodate as many speakers as possible. State law prohibits the city council from acting at this meeting on any matter raised during the public comment period, and members of the public who wish to speak on a matter that is listed on the agenda will be called upon to speak during the discussion of that item. And Mayor, I currently have seven request forms.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Three minutes each if you call the first speakers.
Okay, if I can get the first four speakers to the podium to my left, please. Aggie Freeman, Belinda Burnett, Leah Brown, and Chief Stanfield.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Good evening, Aggie. Whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor Serrato, council, staff, Chief Stanfield, citizens of Merced. On behalf of Rotary District 5220, as Assistant Governor, I am deeply honored tonight to commend from the Rotary Club of Merced Sunrise Fire Chief Casey Wilson, a dedicated public service, a courageous leader, and a proud member of the Rotary Club of Merced Sunrise. Chief Wilson has devoted his life to protecting our community. For decades, he has stood in the front lines of emergencies, answering the call at all hours, putting others first, and ensuring that our city, our neighborhoods, and our families remain safe. His leadership reflects the very best of Rotary's values: service above self, integrity, and fellowship. In his role as fire chief, he carries the trust of our city with honor, and as a Rotarian, he extends the same spirit of service far beyond the firehouse, building bridges of friendship, strengthening families, and inspiring hope through humanitarian projects like the Merced Field of Honor and the Mission of Rotary International. As he takes on the honorable duty of leading the city of Merced Fire Department, we as Rotarians and members of the grateful community recognize not only his professional achievements, but also his character, his integrity, his compassion, and vision. Chief Wilson exemplifies the truth that a servant leader is not measured only by the position they hold, but by the lives they touch and the future they help shape. His example reminds us that leadership is not about rank or title. It is about service, courage, and heart. So, tonight, please join me and Rotary District 5220 in proudly congratulating and commending our fire chief, Casey Wilson, for his unwavering commitment to our people here in Merced, his fellowship as a Rotarian, his embodiment of the motto that we all strive to live by: service above self. I extend our warmest congratulations to our chief, Casey Wilson.
Thank you, Aggie.
Congratulations. This is for you, and this is the four-way test.
Thank you, Aggie. Congratulations, Chief. Next speaker. Good evening, Belinda.
Good evening, council members and other citizens here. I have two things I want to bring up. First thing, I have a hearing disability, and some of you, I can barely understand even when I'm at home watching you guys. So, would you please speak into your mics? Because I know I'm not the only one who's missing a lot of your significant conversations. So, please think about that. The other thing, and I bring it up again, is I'm not in favor of the flags at Bob Hart Square, of putting special flags there, because not every organization can get their flag posted there. So, then you are, and I'm going to use this term, and I hope you understand it, segregating from people who may have a flag to put up. Some people get on it annually. Some people never get on it. Sometimes there are questions about it coming up. So, I hope you will consider thoughtfully to just allow our American flag, our US flag, and our California flag to be flown at Bob Hart Square, and maybe find someplace else or a way for people to put flags that is distinct for their organizations, their groups, whatever, so that it's more uniform and allows everyone an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Leah Brown. Good evening, council, community members. Leah Brown for Development Services Division. I wanted to give you a very brief update on the goings-on regarding the general plan project, downtown station area plan project. So, to kind of give you highlights, back in July, we began with internal technical workshop where we introduced the project to department heads and project managers. Later in July, on the 31st, we held a community-based organization workshop where we had over 40 members of the community, various leaders of all organizations, from schools to churches. We give them the opportunity to be introduced to the general plan project, to speak about it, to envision the future of Merced. They were allowed to highlight areas of interest or concern, and they mapped out ideas, literally, on various maps. During these early months for the general plan, we held several smaller stakeholder interviews conducted by our consultants with staff participation. In August, if you'll recall, we came here and we talked about the logo, and the council made a decision on the logo. On the 27th, we held our first Citizens Advisory Focus Group meeting. And if you'll recall, the Citizens Advisory Focus Group, otherwise known as the CAFG, has 14 members of the public chosen by you, one from each of your districts, several from each of the boards and commissions, and we gave them an introduction, as well as a couple of you. I know Sarah and Matt appreciate your participation in the CAFG. We had an introduction to the process to the general plan, and we talked about the schedule, the chapters, the outline that we'll be, that we'll be working on. We have a general timeline that we discussed at that time. Currently, in September, we're working on an existing conditions and trends workbook with our consultants, and in September, we are going to be conducting internal review of those chapters, and it is considered the first big deliverable from the consultants. Basically, the workbook is a look back on Merced, kind of analyzing where we've been so that we know where we're going forward from. In October, we've got a couple of dates of significance for you. October 8th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, we will be having our second CAFG, the Citizens Advisory Focus Group meeting. And during that meeting, we will be reviewing the existing conditions and trends workbook. So, we'll have a presentation for you, and we'll have that at that meeting. And again, that is right here in the chambers, October 8th from 6:00 to 8:00. And then, at the end of the month, October 23rd, is our first general plan open house and workshop. Other dates to consider: November 10th, the next CAFG meeting, and in early December, we'll come back to you with a full report. But mostly that open house I wanted to mention, and I'll have flyers. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chief Stanfield. Good evening, Mayor and council. At this time, I would like to acknowledge our K-9 team and have them come forward as I acknowledge them for an outstanding achievement that they did this last week when they competed in the San Joaquin County K-9 Trials. Some of the feats that they participated in, events for detection work with firearm narcotics, obedience and agility, open area field searches, apprehension and control scenarios, detecting suspects, vehicle deployments, call-offs, handler protection, and then they had two different competition classes of novice for dogs that are under two years of patrol service, which we have two, and then open class for dogs with more than two years of service, which we have one. So, I want to introduce our team at this time. They are led by Sergeant Horn, which I think I saw him walk down, Officer Zazweda and his K-9 Zeke, Officer Hernandez and his K-9 KOA, Officer McCannon and his K-9 Mako, like taco with a M. Also, also present, as you can see, there's more people. We have agitators, and what they do is they help participate by getting in the bite suits. They help with scenario drills. Eli Gutierrez, Officer Flowerdy, Officer Kusamo, who I don't think is here, and Officer Opinski. This is our K-9 team, and I want to acknowledge their results, because they have not been allowed to participate in the past. So, this last, this last week, K-9 Zeke and Officer Zazweda came out fourth in open area searches and fourth in firearm searches in buildings. Officer Hernandez and KOA took fourth in narcotic searches, second in narcotics overall, second in overall patrol in the novice division, and first in narcotic searches of vehicles. Officer McCannon and Mako in the novice class, they came out fifth in narcotics, fifth in narcotic searches of buildings, fifth in open area searches, third in handler protection, and first overall in the novice division was Officer McCannon and Mako. As an entire team, their results, they took second overall of the entire competition, and they lost to the host agency is what my understanding is. I think it was rigged. But I am very proud of all of you. Although our handlers and our agitators are here, the handlers are going to be presented with commander's coins. Sergeant Horn, I have your chief's coin, but I left it next to my reading glasses in my office, and I'll get it to you later. But I'm very proud of you. On behalf of their K-9 lieutenant, who had to go be a dad tonight and go to a track and field event he was ordered to go to instead of being here, he is very proud of you as well. And so, as a command team, we just I'm very proud of the work all of you put in for these K-9 trials. It is very impressive for the first time you competed to do so well. Great job, and we are proud of you.
Thank you, chief.
We'll bring more coins for the agitators.
You're losing. The dogs are welcome to address the council, but they also have to fill out a green request to speak form if they want to. All right. Jennifer, you want to call up the next speakers? Call the next speakers while Whitaker's.
If I can get the next five speakers? James Reese, Fernando, Nicola Adams, Arturo Barajas, and Karthy Prasad.
Thank you. John, you got everything you need?
And Angela Laura.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Congratulations, guys. Good job. A round of applause for K-9 units. Mr. Reese.
Thank you, Mayor Serato, council members. This will be my last council meeting that I will be attending here in about two or three weeks. I'm going to be moving out of state. I think a few people already know. But I came here because I wanted to give you guys some props. As most of you know, I was involved with the Neighbors Unitedos that was necessarily somewhat funded by you guys and united way. And what we did is, we did every month, we honored one of the city councils at one of our public parks and had a free community cookout. We did all of them except for a council person, excuse me, I'm going to massacre your name, but council person from District 6. I'm sorry, we didn't ever get to you.
That was a joke.
Yes. But hopefully, Neighbors Unitedos will go on after I've left. I have to give some credit to my director, my boss, my friend, Dr. Stephen Usel. Without him, a lot of this would not have been possible. Another volunteer from Delhi, who was a lifesaver when we were having a community cookout at Backmanera Park, who was our bilingual person. Our artist friend Suzanne, who lives across the street. She now does in-home studios at her house, teaching teenagers how to draw and paint, anyway. There's a lot of people that made this possible, and I want to thank each and every one of you. Mike, you showed up at our open house. Major, I mean major, Matt Serato showed up at our open house. It was about a month ago. But it's, when I got here, I didn't think I was going to be able to do what I wanted to do when I came back to Merced, and that was to give back to this community. And I think I've done what I could do, and I appreciate the opportunity that God blessed me with. So thank you, and I'll see you down the road sometime.
Thank you, James. Mr. Aguilar.
Yes. Buenas tardes, Consilio de la Ciudad de Merced, alcalde, miembros de la comunidad.
Good afternoon, city council and members of the audience.
Can I ask for a favor? Si los jovencitos pueden pasar al frente?
If the young, young boys here could step forward?
Yeah, it's your, well, six minutes, so.
Hey, it's three minutes, so that's like two hours. No, I'm kidding. Hey, guys, can you guys?
Three minutes before speaking.
Get to the front?
It's on the soccer, no?
Sí. Okay, mi nombre es Fernando Aguilar. Soy presidente de Merced Soccer Academy, Albion, Merced.
¿Cómo es tu nombre?
Fernando Aguilar. Okay, my name is Fernando Aguilar. I'm the president of Merced Soccer Academy in Albion, Merced.
So.
Yeah, okay. Albion, Merced is more than 25 years working as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We got, like I said, more than 25 years working here at the community and working to prevent. Our program is prevention. Basically, what we do is we give them the best training, the best atmosphere to prevent crime. We got over 400 kids on the rec program, as right now, and we got like six, like five, 550 members on the competitive teams. We got 35 teams on competitive. With those teams, we got 12 teams playing an MLS. MLS, that's a major league soccer. That's the organization nationwide.
I'm going to pause you real quick. Just got, those 30 seconds in Spanish, and then one minute, so there's three minutes left with interpreter, one and a half minutes left.
One and a half.
With English.
Yeah, that's fine.
Take your pick.
One and a half.
If you go back and forth, we'll get it.
You can give me two, that's fine. So basically, we are working hard for the community, like I said, more than 25 years. And what we do here, we give them the experience at the professional level, recreational, half level, and these kids, they got invited to go to Columbus in Ohio. Columbus, we want to play their team, the Columbus Crew team, that's a professional club. So basically, we leaving tomorrow at 2:00 o'clock from Fresno, and believe me, I want to spend five days with those kids because we coming back on Sunday. Mayor, you can be a chaperone if you want to. So we coming back on Sunday, the 21st. Again, we play Columbus Crew, and we play a couple more teams on the local Ohio. Now, after that, these kids is going to Portland in November. They going to Seattle, Washington. Actually, we playing Portland.
Thirty seconds.
We playing Portland on the 15th, and Seattle on the 16th of November. After that, we play in Arizona. So it's a lot of trips. Portland, we take 60 kids. In Arizona, we take 90 kids. So that's a lot of effort from our club. And a lot of people asking me, when we go over there and compete, a lot of people said, Merced, they see Merced, ah, where's Merced? Where is Merced? And they saw that we got only, what, 90,000 members in the community, and they was like...
I got to, Fernando, I got to cut you off. That was three minutes.
Oh, okay. Just the last comment.
Sorry, I got to cut you off. I've been a little past. But big, big round of applause for this man, all his hard work, and these kids.
Thank you.
Sorry, that was, no, Fernando, that was three minutes. You got to, the rules are rules, you can't go past it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
No, thank you, sir. Really appreciate it. Next speaker.
Hello. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Art Barajas. I happen to be a very long resident regarding living in this city, which I happen to take it. This is my home. And I mean, I guess I know everybody in here, and I just want to tell you that I am actually representing some individuals who there's somewhat afraid to get up here in this podium. But it is an issue that has been brought up. I brought it up to many of you folks right here. And what it is, is this. On 16th Street and many of the other places in our community, usually on a Thursday or a Friday, Saturday, and a Sunday, there's all kinds of pop-ups. I believe we all know what a pop-up is. It's when businesses come in and they set up. And when I mean business, it's people who are not regulated regarding all the standards of food handling, all the standards of, that needs to be taken care of regarding working a restaurant or working with food and with many, many issues. I know that the city, in one way or another, is dealt in their own individual ways. I believe that this is not only a problem for the city of Merced, but it's a problem throughout, I believe, the whole state. It's a phenomenon that has happened. Well, the reason why I am here is this. Mr. Enrique Valencia, he opened up a restaurant back in 1992, and there's other businesses that have come in just in the last year. The other one is Taquería con Sabor a México in the last year. And many individuals who are very, very much concerned regarding what takes place mainly on 16th Streets in the evening, past 5:00. And it has to do with the health concerns of handling food, and also the economic impact that has been done to many of the catering trucks, to many of the local restaurateurs, who after 5:00, they do have a problem because not many people show up when they have done everything under their rules set by the city, the county, and the state. And many of the people who are out in the street, just on a pop-up, they are not following the rules. And the main thing why we're here is we would like to set up, and we'd like to know.
That's, three minutes is up, sir. We appreciate your time, and...
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll follow up. Next speaker.
All righty. Good evening, city council, mayor, and city of Merced. My name's Karthik Prasad, here on behalf of Congressman Gray, and I'm afraid I can't really top the Canines. I'm neither that cute nor that well-behaved. But I can give a quick legislative update on everything going on in D.C. And thank goodness, it is September, because the October recess is finally over. For those of you not aware, every August is when Congress is out of session for the month, so we get a whole month with the congressman, which is anything but a recess, because it's nonstop meetings and busyness. So finally, our calendars are no longer on fire, and everything makes a little bit more sense. But I did want to extend a huge thank you to the city council and city of Merced, the insights you provided us and stuff that you've assisted us on is, I just can't thank you enough for it, because it's really paved the way to make September a really outstanding month for us. Just in August, we had a whole boatload of meetings, including a Veterans Advisory Committee meeting, a Labor Roundtable, and an Agriculture Roundtable, results of which are that we are really busy in September, because we've got a whole lot of bills that we need to get in on, and a whole lot of stuff that we got to write, and you can bet we're going to do it. Starting off, last week, we co-sponsored the Rural Veterinarian Workforce Act, which is a bill to provide educational debt relief to veterinarians. We also helped introduce the Protecting Healthcare and Lowering Costs Act of 2025 to the House floor last week, and that's exactly what it says on the tin. It's a bill that aims to protect healthcare access and lower healthcare costs for a lot of our constituents in the Valley. Finally, we wanted to announce that the Congressional App Challenge is open. It's open to all middle and high school students, individuals, or teams of up to four people. The deadline is October 30th, and if you've got a great idea for an app, or you know a kid who's got a great idea for an app, feel free to submit it. We'd love to take a look at it, and hey, you might be able to win a trip to D.C. And yeah, that's about it. We've got our office on 602 West 20th Street, so feel free to stop by, and I'll see you guys at next month's council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the update.
Pull this down real quick. Good evening, city council and citizens of Merced. I'm Nicola Adams. I come up here quite a bit for the Merced County Nut Festival, which happening October 18th at the Merced County Fairgrounds. I would like to thank all who are partner with this. Thank you, city of Merced, for being a partner again. Thank you, Trans County Title, for being a partner again, Merced College, and the congressman's office, and the assemblywoman's office, and all those who are partner with us. Thank you so much for helping make this another great year for the festival, which is our fifth year. I also want to talk about something that I'm also bringing after that. Ah, must be, ah, glutton for punishment. I'm bringing Merced's First Gospel Fest a week after that with the Dove-nominated artist, Vicky Yohi. And Dove is like the Grammys in the Christian world. And so a lot of people know her music, but they don't quite know her name. So this is going to be October 25th at Christian Life Center, starting at 5:00. And so, God, please bless my voice right now, because I'm going to give you a little bit about what she sings, and then you go, oh, okay, I know her. Because of who you are, I give you glory. Because of who you are, I give you praise. Because of who you are, I will lift my voice and say, Lord, I worship you because of who you are. Lord, I worship you because of who you are. People are going, yeah, I know that song, so. Vicky, please forgive me if I didn't do justice. But we're bringing her here. We have tickets for sale, they're just $25. You can also go on Eventbrite, so you can go on mercedgospel eventbrite.com and buy the tickets also. We really want to pack this house. We really want to show, you know, Merced comes out, Merced shows up. And for this to be the first Gospel Fest, even though we've had musicals, I think this is going to be something special and spectacular in our community. So please come out. And then one more thing is, I've noticed that there's a lot of things happening on the same dates, and it's hard for people to decide which thing to go to. The Greater Chamber of Merced used to have a calendar, and if one of the chambers of commerce can do a calendar like we used to do, where people can see what's going on on what date, and they can choose a different date, right, so that people can enjoy all of these things happening, right, instead of having to choose and then going, where there's really nothing to do in Merced when there's so much to do in Merced. So just a thought, throwing that out. But I hope I see you at the Nut Festival and Merced Gospel Fest. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicola. Appreciate everything you do to build community. Gloria over there, she's a...
To be announced.
Okay. Nicola, if you talk to Gloria, she was working on the community calendar, so that might be a good person to partner with.
Okay, Gloria?
Computer, right there.
And can we get our last speaker, Angela Laura?
Angela Laura.
Yes, Angela Welch-Laura, and I've been 26 years a Merced City School District and 25 at Alicia Reyes. The reason I'm here is because my granddaughter now is also involved in something where she has to do two years or something like that for a fence. They're trying to get her for the fence of McNamara, that they claim that she has damaged it and rusted it and broke it, and they want to give her two years jail. I'm trying to say, let's promote the society, because also, I'm from here. All my paperwork came back that I was never an educator, that I'm classified. So if I can also promote advocacy for the children and my granddaughter, the one that is eight years old, is supposed to have been going to Alicia Reyes some time ago. She has now been identified as autistic and has an IEP. Thank you, that's great. But the 17-year-old, they were forced supposedly swimming, and two of them walked off, or they were able to all leave, and when they got to Tenaya, two were arrested. One was my granddaughter, 17. The grandfather was actually working there at McNamara when we were younger. In 1983, he was actually fired for $12 for giving it back to the children of the pool, $12. Now they're trying to get my granddaughter for two years jail for that same fence. I'm trying to run for the, also the senior center president, to help bring back humanity in this community. I cannot be classified and be two things at one time. When I go do my H&R block, I have no peace of mind. I can't be an account clerk and an educator at the same time, and I'm not allowing you to get away with it, because I'm also Nancy Lopez's cousin, and the Robocop, the only one of earth, you can track me back down, the 1501st School Board is proof. And I'd like to thank you for having me, an opportunity that you gave me, but can we promote advocacy for the children and bring them up and not down? I don't think that we should be paying for the fence. The grandfather was actually working there at McNamara when we were younger. In 1983, he was actually fired for $12 for really giving it back to the children of the pool, $12. Now they're trying to get my granddaughter for two years jail for that same fence. I'm trying to run for the, also the senior center president to help bring back humanity in this community. I cannot be classified and be two things at one time. When I go do my H&R Block, I have no peace of mind. I can't be an account clerk and an educator at the same time. And I'm not allowing you to get away with it because I'm also Nancy Lopez's cousin and the Robocop, the only one on earth, you can track me back down. The 1501st School Board is proof. And I'd like to thank you for having me, an opportunity that you gave me. But can we promote advocacy for the children and bring them up and not down? I don't think that we should be paying for the fence. It should be dropped. I think the officer should be charged, maybe even put in jail. And you cannot be protesting your own unconstitutional behaviors, Mrs. Morris, that was taking me dragging, kicking and screaming. And so they asked me to translate for East Coast, Connecticut. And that's what I did. And that was in 2022. They said, stop profiling us in that community of Reyes and the South Side. And I'm also here to say the same thing. We love you, Merced. Let's promote happiness and longevity for the students into the future. With aquatic sports pool would be nice. And also Merced Valley Children's Hospital. So that's what I'm here for. I don't want to see my granddaughter in jail for $2,000 or $3,000 fence that they claim she is responsible for and going to jail. And I had to go to Sandy Mush. So I have to go with her to the next one. I'm coming to you now. So vote me in at the senior center because we need more educators and us promoting advocacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lara. Appreciate you coming to see us. Is that it, Jennifer? Is there anyone else?
That's all we have, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, agenda item I, consent calendar.
All right, any items on the consent calendar? Any members of the council wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Councilor Jean.
I would like to pull I-3.
I-3, okay. Anybody else? Jennifer, anything from the public?
We don't have anything, Mayor.
Discussion or a motion with respect to the balance?
Motion.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Harris and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Boyle. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. Mr. Deanda? Okay, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, I-3, Councilor Jean.
My multiple item, I don't think there's enough information on the two-year lease, on the original agreement between the multiple law enforcement agencies and where that money is coming from. I'm not, I have, let me rephrase. I guess I should ask questions first. So for this particular agenda item, on the staff report, it mentions that it's coming from the asset forfeiture fund. Is that accurate?
Yes, that is accurate.
Okay. And then do we have the original contract from the inter-agencies across Merced County that talks about why we're renting the property?
No, I do not have that with me.
Good. And then, interesting. And then how, because I see two years on this lease agreement with an additional three years to extend. Are we looking to potentially extend this beyond two years?
With the funds that we have right now, we only have the two years available. After that, I'm not sure what the, the plan is.
Okay.
Either myself or our deputy city manager could probably answer that.
Councilmember, once the two years expires, the city relinquishes its responsibility as the financial pass-through and then it goes back to the original, original user and the law enforcement agency. So it will transition away from the city.
You mentioned relinquish the financial pass-through, all right. So as of right now, we're getting money from Merced County and putting it into this asset forfeiture fund?
We're getting it from the US Department of Justice, not Merced County.
But it's going to the asset forfeiture fund? Okay, gotcha. And then again, with regards to after two years, we, as was mentioned before, we don't have the original document at this point in time.
Correct.
All right. Again, I'm not comfortable with going forward and agreeing to or passing this agreement simply because I don't have it written saying that after two years we're done because this still shows an addition three, additional three-year option. And so that's why I have not found it. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Frank. Thank Councilor Jean. Any other questions, anything to add, chief? Captain, anything you guys?
No, our deputy city manager is right on the money. We relinquish all financial responsibility, I guess is the right word, in two years. And it reverts to another agency. We're just a pass-through agency during this timeframe. I think I can speak for several of us in the room. We inherited this long-term contract that will expire in two years. And we will pass this off and this will no longer be the city's burden.
Additional questions, comments? Jennifer, anything from the public?
We don't have anything, Mayor.
Or a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Boyle and a second by Councilmember Dupont. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. Okay, the motion passes with Councilmember Jean voting no.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Frank and Amanda.
Agenda item J, action items. J1, approval of a proposed ground lease agreement between the City of Merced and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, use and lease of portion of city-owned property located at 3400 Parsons Avenue, AKA Rahili Park for wireless communications facility purposes.
Thank you, Jennifer. Director Jensen, whenever you're comfortable.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Community of Merced. Chris Jensen, Parks and Community Services Director here giving you a presentation and a little bit of background on a wireless facility being placed at Rahili Park. Little bit about the report this evening. We will go over the ground lease agreement that's in front of you tonight for consideration, review its alignment with the approved conditional use that was granted earlier this year, discuss a little bit of the new revenues that are generated as a result of the proposed agreement, and then the considered use for those revenues in our park system. Just a brief background on what brought us here this evening. Earlier this year, there was an application submitted to the Planning Commission, which was reviewed and passed forward to, excuse me, passed forward to City Council. It was later approved and that decision of approval was appealed. Council denied the appeal on the basis that the application had met the required CUP conditions. And then negotiations with AT&amp;T led to the proposed lease agreement terms and conditions for your consideration this evening. Some of the goals of the agreement, based on the approved use for staff, were to work with the vendor to request that the site plan incorporate added utility to the existing features at the location, to obtain a one-time capital improvement fund to address some of the ongoing disrepair on the site for the host park, and to ensure that ongoing revenues generated as a result of the lease were used to help cover rising costs of routine maintenance and ongoing park repairs in the system. Some of the terms of the lease before you this evening include the tenant, which is New Singular Wireless PCS, a term of an initial five-year agreement with the potential to extend for four additional five-year renewals, a one-time Rahili Park capital improvement fee of $30,000, a lease rate of $3,000 per month with a 3% annual increase each year, which would generate a potential 25-year revenue of just over 1.3 million for the city of Merced. A little bit about some revisions that staff worked on with the applicant based on the site plan. Initially, the site plan that was reviewed included a cell tower within the grove or just outside the grove of the existing Palm Tree Grove out in Rahili Park. There was a lot of community feedback requesting that it be moved to a more desirable location, not to inundate the existing palms that everyone feels so admiration for and has a strong connection to. There was also concern raised with the initial site plan about the proximity to the playground on the west side of the park. And in addition to that, staff worked with the applicant to ensure that there could be some type of ADA access if the route for vehicular access to the wireless site was added to add some amenity and accessibility to the playground for the community. On the top, you'll see the original proposed site plan, which was approved with the conditional use application. It placed the, let me see if I can highlight that with the mouse. It placed the cell tower location in the driveway on the northern area of the park, just south of the Palm Tree Grove. The revised, the revised plan would actually bypass use of the existing bike trail to the north behind the residences on El Purtell and place the vehicular access road between the playground and the restroom that exists now, leading just west to a new location that's being proposed for the site plan and this lease agreement, which moves the site approximately 200 feet away from the nearest residence and over 150 feet away from the playground. Some options for ongoing use of the revenues being generated from this. Option one would be to dedicate all proceeds or revenues to Rahili Park to increase beautification and park maintenance. As discussed, this park is highly used by our community. There's several visitors every day on a regular basis at this site. And there's ongoing repairs that are required and maintenance to upkeep the beautification on site. Option two would be to split your revenues between Rahili Park and develop a citywide community park fund. That council could use 50% of the proceeds at their discretion each year. Option three would be to create a Capital Park Fund with 100% of the proceeds being able to be used at your discretion year after year based on the given priorities of that year. Staff suggested use would be one-time investments of the $30,000 capital improvement fund to address some of the site concerns that were raised on a walking tour that was hosted earlier this year. Before there was a proposed use of this site for a wireless facility, City Council asked City Manager McBride and staff to attend a walking tour on Rahili Park's site to identify with residents and park users some of the major concerns and potential use of one-time funds being allocated to park repairs. During that tour, we talked about things such as lighting, shelter disrepair, bike path disrepair, ADA access on the site, ongoing maintenance with the restrooms and concerns associated with that use, as well as a potential small dog park along Black Rascal Creek off of Rahili Park. With those options in mind and the $30,000 potential allocation, staff are recommending a $20,000 upgrade to the picnic shelter on site. This would include a new facelift with paint, new lighting underneath the picnic shelter to be better seen at night, and all new picnic tables underneath the shade structure. The additional $10,000 are being suggested to increase walkability with pavement repairs on the inside of the park. They're pictured in this second image on this slide here. And then with any remaining funds that might be available, we would continue the LED light grade, upgrades, excuse me, that we started in the parking lot, which is depicted just on the bottom of the screen. What are the fiscal impacts to this agreement? $30,000 one-time capital improvement being allocated to this park, which does not exist now. $27,000 in revenue for this fiscal year, which has not been allocated or encumbered to this point. A potential $36,000 revenue year after with 3% increases and a potential 1.3 million in total revenue over 25 years. I do want to reiterate that although there are options to extend this lease to a 25-year term, the lease before you tonight only suggests extensions of four, four extensions of five years. What's being approved for, or at least for your consideration tonight, is a five-year initial term. Those terms can be modified with every amendment or approval moving forward. Some community impacts as a result of the potential lease agreement are capital improvements to address existing park disrepair, playground equipment, shelter, walking path amenities, and ADA access to our playground would all be addressed through this agreement. Increased level of effort on ongoing maintenance and operations. The monthly allocation, if the option one, which is suggested by staff, was taken up by council, that would give us a revenue stream that is rarely seen for any of our community parks at $3,000 a month to be dedicated to ongoing maintenance and repair. Also safer conditions. Right now, lighting is limited. We have started some LED upgrades within the parking lot. This would extend that opportunity down the bike path inside the shelter, which are also some areas of concern. We also would look at the bike path underneath Parsons Avenue, which can be a safety issue in the early hours of the morning and late at night. Security cameras being installed. I want to thank our partners at Merced Police Department, who have really backed our, our efforts to increase on-site on, in our parks, making sure that our restrooms are available and that there's no nefarious activities taking place, and timely playground repairs. Sometimes, like much of the equipment that comes before you for consideration to purchase, there are delays in equipment availability. However, oftentimes, it's us needing to find repair funds to come and ask council to allocate from the general fund. This would alleviate the general fund from that necessity. In conclusion, the lease agreement ensures that the use of the park to expand the approved wireless services equate to ongoing investments right back into our park system. The agreement creates one-time revenue to address immediate needs at the host park, Rahili, and new ongoing revenues to address levels of maintenance not currently available in our system. Our recommendation is to approve the lease agreement before your, for your consideration this evening, to authorize the city manager designee to execute necessary documents, to appropriate $30,000 in one-time revenue for use at Rahili Park for improvements, and to appropriate the aforementioned $27,000 in revenue for fiscal year '25 to increase the maintenance currently being deferred at Rahili Park. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Director Jensen. Any questions before we take public comment? Councilor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Director Jensen. Just give me a second and I try to get into my machine here. Can you please go back a couple of slides where you showed the, the map for proposed location of the tower? There we go.
Yes, sir.
So I just want to confirm that this map you got up on the screen that was attached to the agenda is in fact where the tower is proposed to go and is in, in connection with the lease agreement?
Yes, the, the original site, site plan is on the top of your screen here. This is just outside, just south of the Palm Grove. The new location that's being proposed is on the bottom. What you see in red is where the initial proposed site would be. This site moves about 50 to 60 feet southwest, putting it further away from the Grove of Palm Trees, the shade structure and the playground.
Okay. I mean, it, it sounds like a silly question and, and I have not been out there myself. I've heard from my constituents that a spot that was conveyed to them as the proposed location and the ground of spray paint, it was actually closer to the fence line than further away. It's created some consternation. So I want to make sure that the, the site that you and I talked about with City Manager McBride and has shown on the slide is actually where it's going to be.
I believe the reason for the, the miscommunication between the site plans is due to the fact where the vendor referenced their point of distance between their first plan and the second plan. And the first plan, you'll see the parcel, the parcel number that is referenced in the distance calculation. It is actually different than the parcel number that is referenced in the second site plan, which is the parcel that's set back further off of the bike path. So in total, my, my understanding is that it went from about 150-plus feet away from the residence that was identified in the first site plan to over 200 feet away.
Okay. It's, it's important to me, it's important to the neighborhood. I just wanted to confirm that. And just in my own words, the original site would have been basically in the middle of the stand of palm trees behind the rotary enclosure up on the hill. Thanks to the city and AT&amp; at AT&amp;T for their willingness to consider other options within the scope of the council's approval. Now about 35-ish feet further away from the bike path and the neighborhood, and actually down about 10 feet closer to the creek. So hopefully this does a better job of camouflaging the base and the antenna itself. Mr. Jensen, I think you argued pretty persuasively for allocating the revenue back into the park. Just another point maybe to ask you about, and if you don't know it, we can read the agreement together. But the idea is that the city has the right to ask AT&amp;T at any time to remove this facility, and then if they are asked to remove it, or if the five-year lease expires and it's not renewed, AT&amp;T has to put the park back where they found it, and they have to pay the cost of doing so, right?
I would, before I say correct, I would need to review the lease in greater detail. City attorney Cornwell reviewed the lease agreement with the attorneys from AT&amp;T for terms and conditions. Our area of interest was the park utility, the location, and any conveniences that we could pull out of the agreement to better the community as a location for recreation. So I apologize for not having that.
No, that's okay. Between the two of us, I'm the lawyer. So I'm looking at removal/restoration, and I threw you a softball, but I do see that language.
Okay.
So I want to point that out for the community.
Yes, you are correct.
I don't have any more questions at this point in time.
Anyone else? Okay, so you know at this time, Jennifer will open up for the public. Are there any requests to speak from the public?
So we do have one, but it looks like we have a couple over there as well. If I can get Belinda Burnett to the podium, please.
Okay, Belinda, if you could come back up. And if anyone would like to be heard on this item, please give Venus or somebody else the green request to speak form. Jennifer will receive it. She'll call your name. You'll be invited to speak.
Can I also get Julie Horrell? Is that Melinda or Linda Rybka? And Brenda, please.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, Belinda, you're first. Julie, I think, yeah, Belinda was, yeah, she called your name first.
Because that's the problem. I do, I have a hard time hearing her because she's so good at what she does. Okay.
You don't got to butter her up.
I do hate doing this. I have a few pictures that I would like to show. I went, let's see, yeah. There's two in there. I went today to the park and took some pictures. I want you to see what it looks like now. That is from the parking lot area. Then we show number two. And that's where the playground equipment is. And that's where the shelter is. Now, until I just saw this, I thought that the tower was going right around the shelter. So I created a picture if this cell tower was put where I thought in the back. I don't know about you, but I don't think that looks very pretty. And here's one of another picture with a cell tower. And this is a cell tower that's in Merced right now. And that's the trouble with the cell towers. At one time, when they first were doing them, they really looked nice, and they've gotten pretty, more like just metal. They might as well not pretend they're trees. So this is a close-up picture of a cell tower. I don't know about you, but I enjoy my park, and I'd like to see it kept as it is. And then when I hear about 25, how much money there would be in 25 years, I kind of question that because I doubt very much it's going to be that long. I understand trying to find ways to get money for the park to support it. I kind of laugh at $30,000 because if you really wanted to support the park, why not make it 50,000? And a five-year contract, I'm not comfortable with that. I'm an AT&amp;T customer. I'll be honest, I am not happy with their service. There's nothing to say, if management changes, would they stand up to what they have? So I have some real concerns. To me, the park is the park, and we need to support the park as individuals. And I can understand trying to get a flux of income to support the park. I don't think this is the way because, like other things, once you let one there, somebody else is going to say, you let them in, now you have to let us in. So I hope you will reconsider this and at least hold it off because they've changed the site now. Let us go get a chance to look at this new site. And thank you, and I hope you take serious consideration of holding this off.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. All right, next speaker. Julie, I think that was you.
My name is Julie Horrell, and I live right where the original site was originally supposed to be, about 182 feet from my home. We have been in contact with Mr. Smith and Mr. McBride and told that it was going to be moved back about 55 to 60 feet. However, observing the trucks there marking, we watched my neighbor, myself, she's walked it, I've walked it. It's actually moved it actually closer to where it's marked. It's not 100, or it's not 55 to 60 feet back from the original site. It's now about 215 feet from my home, about 230 feet from Brenda's home, and 135 feet from our other neighbor. So our concern is, although Mr. Jensen and you have all posted that, yes, this is where it's going to be, the markings on the ground do not show that. And so my concern is, is who's going to go out and verify that the markings are actually going to be put in the actual spot that is being talked about and not going to remain where it's currently marked? Because if it's currently going to remain where it's marked, it's wrong. So I like to know, like, are you guys going to go out? Are you guys going to check this? Who's going to verify this? Or are you just going to just say, well, this has been marked, this is where it's going to go? Too bad. So I'm kind of at a loss, and, you know, I'm hoping that you'll stand up and do the right thing, go out, physically check the markings, verify before this is where the ground is going to be broken. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get you an answer. As soon as public comment's done, we'll get an answer to that. All right, next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Linda Rybka, and I have been living in Merced since 1973, and I was around when Rahiley Park was built, and it is a jewel in our town. And in fact, that's why people move to northeast Merced. I am speaking on behalf of, my husband and I are captains of our Neighborhood Watch. We have been for over 20 years, and we just feel an obligation to speak here tonight. I am here to represent the majority of Oakmont and most of Brookdale. That takes in all the homes from Yosemite, down to the park, along Parsons, along Brookdale, all the way up to all of past Chenoweth Elementary School. We have had boots on the ground, and we will continue to have boots on the ground. We are not happy, we are very disappointed, and we're angry. We are homeowners, we have worked hard to invest where we live. I am now going to speak as a realtor. I have been a realtor for over 40 years in this community. People run to live where we live. We have had multiple offers on many of the homes in that area, and it will continue, I hope. But as a realtor, I have to share with you that when you become a seller, you have to disclose cell towers and any other apparatuses like that. There's a four-page disclosure. If you do not tell the truth, and the buyer moves in and afterwards discovers after the fact, that buyer can sue you. Those are the facts. I've already been told by several buyers that they will not buy my home because there is going to be a tower in the park. And I'm speaking from the truth in my business. These are hard, cold facts. I did not like to hear that. My husband and I have worked very hard to purchase the home and live where we are and to keep our neighborhood up. Being captains of the Neighborhood Watch, we've had a lot of issues, starting with cats on down. It's not been an easy position to hold. So I just wanted you all to know that I'm here to represent this large area, and we will continue keeping boots on the ground. Thank you.
Hello, good evening.
Hi. Well, you all know how I feel about, you know, destroying nature to build this progress. And I don't believe AT&amp;T is going to hold on to that lease for 25 years due to, of course, satellite technology is taking over our cell towers. As you know, there is Space Mobile, there is Starlink, and they're all vying for that. And I really don't think that cell towers are going to be the way of the future. But of course, I lost my appeal. So if this tower is going to be there, I do hope that the majority of the money goes back into Rahiley Park. Cell towers are gross users of energy, so we need to offset that carbon footprint. And that only way we're going to be able to do that is by the parks. Put more plants in the parks. Re-grass, reseed irrigation systems for our parks. And I am very disappointed that the tower is going to be there in the first place, but all of you already know that. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Jennifer, any further comments?
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council. First, either Chris or Daryl, I'm not sure if this would be a question for you, but the markings on the ground, our ability and willingness to hold AT&amp;T to the deal, the promises that were made about the location of cell tower, could you guys speak on that? Answer Ms. Horrell's question if you could.
Yeah, sir, certainly. I need to apologize. The markings on the ground were not done by AT&amp;T. They were done by city staff, just to give a rough estimate of the new location. Obviously, we were off-base. There was no measurements taken. It wasn't a formal process. It was just to help indicate where it was being moved in relation to or away from the Grove of Palm Trees and the playground, which were the primary areas of concern raised. What is, if the lease agreement is approved tonight, what you approve as a site plan in your admin report, which is the bottom illustration here, that the city engineering department, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Jordan, he can talk in detail about how this is carried out, but it must be approved and inspected by our own engineering team, and that inspection is carried out based on the submitted site plan that was approved by council.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Mr. Jordan.
In agreement with that, Mr. Mayor, what the, see on the diagram there, that will dictate exactly where the cell tower will fall, and we, as a engineering department, would ensure that that location is verified in the field before it's constructed. So that addition of that layout with the agreement would supersede anything that's been painted on the ground.
All right, additional questions for city engineer or director of Parks and Community Councilor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. If approved tonight, do you know how quickly construction would begin?
I believe there's some legal considerations that need to be finalized between the attorney's office and AT&amp;T after the city manager signs the approved documents. My understanding from Mr. Jones, who's been the applicant for the last several months on this case, is that the construction would start as soon as possible once the legal documents were signed and returned.
Is that going to take the playground and rotary shelter, or anything else out of commission for a period of time?
I don't think so for, it may for the area between the storage shed or restroom, the back of the restroom building, and the new driveway that would go out to the location that's mapped out there. The playground would still have utility that would be fenced off. The shade structure would still have utility. There would just be a median divide fenced off for construction purposes. As far as the shade structure, we could work with our Public Works Department to phase the construction of that or the work being done there. My suggestion would be we do it in the winter, which is where we rarely have community celebrations or reservations, to make sure that it's ready in time as much as possible for our Easter celebrations that are very popular in this particular park.
I agree with that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nothing else from me for Mr. Jensen?
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, council previously discussed this at length, also discussed it at a potential other site as well. At a previous council meeting, council gave direction to locate the tower in the park. And again, you know, especially to the neighbors as well, obviously, nobody, everybody uses their cell phones, as we stated earlier, but nobody wants this in their yard, but it's a necessary piece of infrastructure, especially in our modern society, and we just hope that where it's located, where it's constructed, and potentially the funds that come from it to help the park and enhance the park. And, you know, if this turns into something that detracts from the quality of what is a very, very nice park and very nice neighborhood, I think that would be a bad thing. But we're, hopefully, this is something that can blend in as best as possible, and we can use some of the proceeds to enhance the park. So before, Snyder, two decisions. One is to approve this license agreement, lease agreement, and then second, council is to give direction on, the slides are coming up, and then on how exactly to program any potential revenue, the $30,000 initial fee plus the third, $3,000 per month. The options the staff presented are, one, to dedicate all to Rahiley Park, two, to split it. I think the staff recommendation was half to Rahiley and half to other parks, or three, to put it all into some sort of parks master fund or something of that nature. Okay, maybe two separate things. First, any discussion or emotion with regards to the lease?
Motion?
Second. Okay, pending, Councilor Jong's call.
So I'll speak on this and kind of reiterate what I mentioned before. There were other locations, right? Another one was off of McKee, the old fire station, that water tower right there could have been utilized for this purpose. And I'm not fond of using our green spaces for commercial leases, right? That's why I support mixed-use, mixed-income neighborhoods where we do have areas in which we could put up a cell tower, right? And so I think it's important that we do acknowledge that the park needs to be repaired, maintained, fixed, right? But it shouldn't come at the cost of having to lease out the green space, right? It's a 30-feet-by-30-feet enclosure. I just don't agree with it being there. I think there's other locations that would work. It's just not, it's just not where we want it.
Okay, motion second. Any additional comments? All right, we'll call for the question.
Okay, a motion by council member Harris and a second by council member DuPont. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. Okay, and the motion passes with council member Jong voting no.
All right, takes us to the second issue, which is how to program the lease revenue. Any ideas, Councilor Smith?
Thank you. So I was actually hoping to take these questions together, but so be it. As I was the last time this came up, I'm resigned to this tower going in the park. I disagree with Councilmember Jeong. Other sites were looked at, the water tower was looked at. It was determined to be unsafe and unsecure. I don't think anybody up here would support putting more weight on the water tower when engineers say that's a bad idea. The issue is also that federal law is basically putting a cell tower into the space where the coverage map, cell coverage map was weakest. And this is now the third or fourth time it's been in front of us. Unfortunately, for my constituents and probably for me, that cell tower was going somewhere in the middle of D4 and most likely within a few hundred yards radius of Cheneau Elementary School. That's just the reality. And I don't think, I don't see this as a precedent for putting cell towers in parks, but I do see this as precedent for if a cell tower goes in one of our parks, how do we use the money? For me, I relied upon what I heard as council support and city support for being able to use the rental income and other monies derived from AT&amp;T to benefit the park and thus benefit the neighborhood that's bearing the impact. I think it's frankly wrong, in a moral sense, to pocket this money and put it in the general fund. This money has to go back into Rahilly Park. And I think there's broad agreement up here, but I'll just, you know. This may come to your district, where you have to decide between one group of your constituents over another. And I want to be there for you to be able to say that one of the reasons it's going in the park is so that we can program the money back to help you because you are bearing the impact. That's not gonna be the case if it's in a parking lot somewhere. So, in this sort of situation where there's no other, no better option, I'm gonna ask for everybody's support to program 100% of the money back into Rahilly.
Councilor Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. I give great weight to Councilmember Smith's opinion on this, and I would support his recommendation that the money all go into Rahilly Park for maintenance and upgrades.
All right, additional comments or a motion? Councilor Jeong?
Yeah, I definitely agree in terms of ensuring that this money goes towards the impacted park. I think it's important that if we're gonna put up an eyesore there, might as well make the park look pretty, right? And so, I agree with all the income going there. But my remarks was more in terms of, as we develop, continue to develop, we need to think about these type of things and ensure that they don't go into future parks, right? Think about it and actually create spaces in which we, where we want them to go. So, I understand what you're going, Councilmember Smith, but my comment is more about future development in which we should plan. So, I agree with putting this money towards Rahilly Park.
Okay, additional comments, discussion, or a motion?
Motion.
Second.
And that motion, Councilmember Harris, I assume that's?
For all the money to Rahilly Park.
Got it, okay. And that's your second. Mayor Proton Boyle?
Second.
All right. Additional comments? Okay, seeing no one, call for the question.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Harris and a second by Mayor Proton Boyle. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. Councilmember Deanda, what's your vote? Okay, and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, everybody.
We'll take a brief break, ladies and gentlemen. We'll come back in five minutes, a little after 7:30. So, 7:30, say 7:32 will reconvene. It's now 7:35, and on to agenda item J2. Jennifer?
Okay, agenda item J2, approval of the 2026 Cafeteria Plan Renewal Regarding Employees and Retirees' Health and Welfare Benefits, Including Medical, Dental, Vision, Disability Life, and Flexible Spending.
Thank you, Jennifer. Maggie?
Good evening, Mayor and council. This item is to consider approving the renewal for the 2026 Cafeteria Plan Regarding Employees and Retirees' Health and Welfare Benefits. This year, the plan received, the medical portion of the plan received a 14.6% increase.
Jennifer, any, first, before we do that, any questions for Maggie? Okay, anything from the public?
I do have one request to speak for him from Jason Salters.
All right. Jason?
Hello, Mayor, City Council. My name is Jason Salters. I've been with the City Public Works Department for 23 years. And I'm currently Mace President, Merseyside Association of City Employees. This insurance increase that she just told you about, for those of us in Mace and AFSMI, it hits us pretty hard. A lot of us aren't in the pay zone that we'd like to be in, that would keep us where we want to be, which is just heads above water. A lot of us run really thin margins. And me, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm gonna be just fine. I'm real close to retirement, so I am not speaking for myself on this matter. But I look at the guys that I work with coming into this unit today. Both, both the blue collar guys in Mace and the white collar folks that work in this building here each and every day. We could really use some awareness that we're the unseen ones that make this city function. And we don't get, we don't get the glory. Man, I see these young guys, and I, when I first started, I had brown hair, by the way.
Me too.
I tell you, you've got good people working for you. You've got good people that care. You've got good people that will drive into flooded areas and pull people out of apartments. I'm telling you, please, when, when, when we come in and we speak up to you, know that most of us would rather be home doing whatever it is. But when we come in to speak to you, it's because there is a need. There is, there is something going on with your people that you need to recognize. And so, I'm not here just for this insurance thing tonight. We've got negotiations coming up about a year, a little more than a year ahead. And I came in and spoke last time for negotiations, and we got a plan, but here we are, having to ask for an adjustment on this insurance because it puts us heads starting to go underwater again. We need some real help, and I'm gonna leave it at that. Thank you for your time and attention.
All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Jennifer, anyone else?
That's all we have, Mayor.
Councilor Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. I can't say enough good things about, about Public Works and the effort they put into everything. If you remember the floods and the hours that they put in and the work they put in and the work they did on Bear Creek and everything, it was just, just amazing. I'd like to ask City Manager McBride what we can do, what the city can do in this, in this case. They're already on the contract, but they're coming up in a year. Share some ideas with us, maybe?
Thank you, Councilmember. Obviously, can't say enough. Look, behind everyone who has a badge, and thank you for those that are in tents tonight. And they drive a vehicle, and they're on a road, and they use a pump or something that is maintained by somebody that often goes without recognition. So, they are very important to what they do. And they work in buildings that are maintained by these employees, and so, they're, what they provide is very valuable to all of us. And the parks we discussed tonight, that we all enjoy so much, and the streetlights that we all rely on are all important things that they maintain. So, having said all that, because we do appreciate what they do, we can surely engage, and we already have since the last meeting, we talked with the union representatives. There could be a way that we could discuss perhaps a side letter for one year that we have remaining for the term. We could discuss that with them, bring back some options for you to consider. Something we can definitely talk about. Right now is where we have, we have a sharing arrangement that's spelled out in the admin report for you. So, if we could look at some other options. There's obviously some trade-offs we could do that we could look at, have to come back and be considered by the council. But that, there is a process we could go through.
And I think I speak for, hopefully for everyone where no one likes this. This is, this is a significant increase in the premiums, something out of our control, roughly a fifteen percent increase. These health service is a huge part of what we provide as an employer. The premiums are going up roughly a hundred and fifty dollars bi-weekly from a little over a thousand dollars to about eleven-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars. The city still pays the vast majority of that. Our costs are going up roughly eighty-two dollars bi-weekly, so the city will pay roughly, on average, about nine-hundred-and-twenty, nine-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars. But still, there's a significant impact of almost a seventy-dollar increase on average in premiums for the employees. So I think we all pride ourselves in treating our employees well and valuing our employees and recognizing that they're the ones who provide the essential services that, that our city provides. But again, I mean, I support it. I don't think we have much of a choice, but at the same time, it's, city's paying more, employees are paying more. It's all, you know, it's hard. Anybody else? Councilmember Jean?
Yeah, before us, it's essentially an increase from the providers, right? And it's, it's tough to think that, hey, this is something we just gotta accept, and this is it. I've spoken to the city manager about, what if we change providers, right? How do we find a lower rate that would impact everybody less? But as of right now, this is what we have. So I'm not fond of us approving a higher rate that we have to pay, that everybody has to pay. I disagree with that, but it is what it is at the end of the day. Now that aside, right, I do fully support reopening negotiations with the unions, right? Personally, I believe in a single payer healthcare system, right? So I think the government should provide healthcare, and nobody, no employee should have to pay for it. So definitely in support of ensuring that, hey, if we need to start this in the city with our employees, let's do it.
Additional comments? Councilmember Smith?
Yes, one of the things is above my pay grade. It seems to me that it's really the medical insurance and the FSA that's driving this. Dental and vision disability, at least in the staff report, those rates actually went down. So, you know, I mean, I went back and I looked at the CBA with Mace just as an example. I mean, this was contemplated and bargained. There's a, there's a breakdown of fifty-five, forty-five in terms of who bears the burden of rate increases. I think the issue for me and for our, our employees, this is well beyond what was contemplated. And that's like a mutual mistake of fact in a contract negotiation. So I would, you know, I'm looking to our, our team. I would appreciate it if the management could at least sit down with Mace and AFSMI and hear them out, and maybe there's something to be done, maybe there's not. But at the same time, I don't know the timelines, and I, I wouldn't want to kick this can down the road a little bit longer and our employees lose coverage or their coverage is somehow weakened or in jeopardy. So that's what, that's what I meant when I said this is beyond my pay grade. But if there's a way to thread that needle, I think I'm hearing council support for at least hearing our team out and then deciding where to go, and we have some options.
All right, Councilmember Dupont?
Thank you, Mayor. I would join Councilmember Smith. It's, it's kind of hard to tell also what, where's the line, right? Is, is it another five percent that we're have to pay into? What is the split? Is it sixty, fifty? Is it sixty-five? Sorry, bad math. Sixty, forty? I went to law school, not math school. So from here, it's, it's hard to tell what would help. Could we do a year agreement? Sure. I have the same fears. I don't want to kick this can down the road and we're right back into negotiations next year. I think it's too late. I think we need to move quickly, if we are gonna move. Look, medical is going up for everyone. You see it across the board in all government entities. This is something that we can bear for one year and, and have another discussion at renegotiations. That may be a more appropriate time, but I'm open to, to hearing what staff may have as a short-term solution, because I agree. I think this wasn't contemplated in the, in the past negotiations, understanding where medical prices were and where premiums were at that time as well.
Anyone else?
Mayor and council members, and correct me if I'm in error, Mr. City Attorney, perhaps you can provide direction to staff to reopen negotiations with AFSMI and Mace. But at this point, we do ask that you proceed on your consideration concerning the health package. So there are two separate items here, of course, the first being about the health package that we are trying to get approved tonight, so we can proceed with open enrollment. And then if the council so desires, direct staff to sit down with AFSMI and with Mace and open negotiations and see if we can come up with a side letter.
City Attorney Cornwell?
Mayor and Council, I would make a slight amendment to that request, and we can come back with a, later negotiations is an approved closed-session subject, and we can adequately brief council prior to reopening. And then if there's a decision, we can announce that out, out of closed session.
Okay. Councilmember Dupont?
Thank you. Just clarification, that re opener would be specifically for looking at the medical premiums?
That is correct.
Okay.
Further discussion or a motion to that affret? The Quintero Plan. Councilmember Smith?
Just to clarify a question for Deputy City Manager. You did a better job of articulating my concern, so thank you, Frank. Are you saying that so we can move ahead with open enrollment and make sure everybody's at least covered? That you're suggesting that unless we have other questions, the council approve the cafeteria plan tonight?
That is correct, sir.
And then treat the, the, what I'll call unforeseen increase in medical rates as a separate issue?
Yes.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that.
Thank you.
If the city attorney agrees.
There's some discussion as well of, I know we look around and shop around, but continue to look at other options as well, too, if there's gonna be other providers or if there's a, you know, we, obviously we should be shopping for the best deal at all times, whatever gives our employees the best coverage and at the, at the best price. All right. Additional discussion or a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Then Councilmember Harris, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Harris and a second by Councilmember Dupont. Mayor and Council, please cast your votes. Okay, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you, Frank.
Okay, Agenda Item J three, Report and Adoption of a Resolution Improving the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for Program Year Twenty-four, Twenty-five and Authorizing Submittal of the CAPR to HUD.
Thank you, Jennifer. Kim, our annual report card to HUD.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Whoops. So this is our annual report, as you said. This reports on the 2024 CAPR or Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. It's our fifth and final year of the previous now consolidated plan. So what is the CAPR? It's our report card for the prior year. Being that we're in annual plan year 2025, this reports on the 2024 program year. The CAPR reports a summary of our goals accomplished. It reviews the summary of the revenues and expenditures for the different funding sources. Also, it's a mechanism for HUD to use for tracking national job statistics, demographics, et cetera. All right. So during the 2024 program year, as of the first substantial amendment, we had one-point-nine million of CWG available. Our allocation itself was just a little bit over one million. And we expended one-million-sixty-nine-thousand-five-hundred-twelve during the year of home funds. We had at the start of the year, end, end of the year, one-point-five million for home funds and expended two-million-nine-hundred-twenty-six. So we used some of our older program funds, and most of that was going to the Devonwood Apartments project. Another, our third funding source that we reported in CAPR is our CWG CV or Coronavirus Funds that we received two rounds of in 2020. We got one-million-one-hundred-ninety-three to five-hundred-seventy-three in total. As of currently, we have expended six-hundred-ninety-three-thousand-four-hundred-sixty-three. And if you remember, back in February of this year, we did an amendment to the 2019 annual plan to adjust those, repurpose the rest of the funds, and that's about four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand to the Water and Sewer Main Project on K Street. So just going over a snapshot of the year, we had some highlights. So council approved the annual plan August fifth, twenty oh four, or twenty twenty-four. HUD didn't approve, or we didn't receive access to the funds until about November seventh. So it did take a while to get our grant agreement approved through HUD. Again, we did a first substantial amendment in February, February third, and that moved some freed-up funds from CWG program income and disencumbered carryover funds to the Water and Sewer Main Project on K. We did meet our timeliness test. Every year we have a timeliness test. We can't have more than one-point-five percent of our current allocation on hand, and we surpassed that at one-point-three-two percent. So we did well. We approved seven public service programs at the start of the year, and six of those were implemented, one choosing to withdraw their application. Two, we're working on retroactive agreements. They implemented the programs. If you recall, at the start of the program year, one of the things that we mentioned, maybe an issue, was implementing seven projects, which is a lot for us. And so that's, the fact that we're still working on agreements currently is kind of a lingering thing, lingering problem with what I mentioned at the start of the year. We did work with Sierra Saving Grace to purchase a property containing two units that successfully went through. Our projects with Continuum of Care and with Project Sentinel for housing services went through, and then Devonwood Apartments, renamed River Canyon Apartments is under construction currently. And then again, our Water Sewer Main Project, we are waiting on clearance of a couple of repayments that we had to make in correlation with environmental clearances. And then also for the 2019 annual plan amendment, we're waiting on the last invoice to go through. So a substantial amendment for both the 2019 and the 2024 annual plan repurpose funds for the K Street Water Sewer Main Project, and that is, again, awaiting some issues with HUD and then the 2019 amendment. So regarding public services, Harvest Time carried out their program to address food insecurity. Every year, they do an amazing job. This year, they distributed food, food boxes to about nine-hundred-and-twenty-four households, distributed over five-thousand pounds of food, delivered one-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirteen lunches to the homeless. And then Lifeline CDC carried out their program for, to address poverty in the Laughmo area. They assisted over a thousand community members there. One of the things that they do also is they have, they run a childcare service that allows their parents to work and take job training classes, and also they assisted them with tax refunds. And so over the year, the total of their tax refunds going back to those residents were a hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-eight, which I think is amazing. All right. So Project Sentinel carried out their ten unit landlord counseling project. They received a hundred and calls, a hundred and seven calls. Twelve cases were opened. And then distributed a very wide area of materials, outreach materials, places like United Way, County Library, ADD, here at City Hall even, and different locations through the city. Sierra Saving Grace continued their emergency rental assistance program using CWG funds. Utility assistance, mortgage assistance was included in that. They helped about fifteen households. And then during the year, they officially closed out the CWG TV or Coronavirus assistance, assisting a total of a hundred-and-fifty-eight persons. And we have a number of households. They helped fifty-six households over a course of a couple of years. So in total, between Sierra Saving Grace and Salvation Army, the city with their partners helped a hundred-and-forty-six households through coronavirus. So regarding Salvation Army, they also carried out the same type of program and also closed their project out December thirty-first. This forty-four persons assisted, I think, is incorrect. I was looking that earlier this afternoon, and it actually was about ninety persons, actually, sorry, households. All right. As I mentioned before, Sierra Saving Grace successfully purchased a property. It was a two-unit property. We got a before picture there and an after picture. It was a really great project. It also helped to eliminate some blighted area. It actually was a code enforcement property. At the start of their escrow, we worked with code enforcement to allow them to work through their escrow and close escrow. Those issues were resolved by the, by closing escrow. All right. Project Sentinels Fair Housing Services project assisted seventy-eight residents through their intake and referral. They did have eight cases during the year and distributed eight-hundred-and-fifty-four items for education for fair housing. So with the CAPR, we're required to follow our public, our citizen participation plan. Regarding that, we published notices and we said some star, we said county times, and also posted notices in the, on the housing webpage in that City Hall. We held a meeting for the public on August seventh and held a fifteen-day public comment period from August eleventh through August twenty-fifth. And the draft report was available online, and that the housing division, and could be emailed upon request. We did have We did have translation services and special accommodations could be made if requested. So tonight, we're asking to approve the resolution, to approve the CAPR and permission to submit the CAPR report as is to HUD. Also, if HUD needs any changes made to the report, we're asking permission to make those modifications without having to come back. And no public hearings required per our citizen participation plan.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions for Kim? Okay, Jennifer, anything from the public on this?
We don't have anything, Mayor.
Back to council for discussion and/or a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Harrison, the second from Mayor Proton Boyle.
Yeah, a motion by Councilmember Harrison, a second by Mayor Proton Boyle. The motion will include the adoption of Resolution 2025-57, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Merced, California, approving the 2024 Program Year Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. Okay, and the motion passes unanimously as well with the city attorney.
Always good to have the support of the lawyer. Just wanted to see if that button worked.
Item K, reports, K1, report on the county islands within city limits.
I'd have voted no, that'd be pretty scary. All right, welcome, Johnny.
One moment, we're getting the correct.
Whenever you're ready.
Information.
Adjournment. What's a step ahead of us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the community. My name is Johnny Lan. I am the Acting Planning Manager in Development Services. And as mentioned, this is going to be a discussion, a report about annexing county islands. Members of the City Council have expressed interest in evaluating potential feasibility of considering the annexation of city islands. I am here to begin that discussion and to ask that you give me direction and staff direction if you so desire to move forward on research or any more information after this conversation. The Cortez and Knox-Hertzberg Local Government Organization Act was, was created by the state, by state legislature to, in some ways, keep cities honest. Prior to this act, cities were, it was not uncommon for cities to do what we in planning called sort of leapfrog development, where they would find something that they wanted that maybe gave them economic development opportunities or, you know, an airport or an industrial park. And they would annex those, those areas without giving consideration to other areas that might be nearby. And so legislature came in and said that this is not a good way of developing. And so this act was created to support growth in a comprehensive way. And now annexations must be approved by LAFCO. In our case, it's a Merced County LAFCO. Annexations could be with or without election, depending on the property owner or registered voter consent. They vary in type. We have standard annexations, which you council have considered, either in the pre-annexation process or an annexation process. And those typically are the contiguous to the city annexations. Again, that's why it's sort of called standard. There's also annexations to correct boundary anomalies. Sometimes that's related to maybe a stream or a road or that. So it's just to sort of make things more correct in the boundaries. It's not really to annex large swaths of property. And then there's the island annexation, which is, they're isolated unincorporated areas within the city boundary. Again, these annexations must be contiguous to the city. And annexing jurisdiction can impose taxes, assessments, and fees after the annexation takes place. In LAFCO terms, an island is an unincorporated area that is completely surrounded by a city or substantially surrounded by a city and such that it could be logically annexed. Sometimes they're also called pockets. You might hear that too. Our current county islands range in areas from 5.6 acres to about 209 acres and change. Some areas actually already have city services, water, sewer, storm drainage, fire, and public safety, mutual aid. Not all areas meet the LAFCO island definition of substantially surrounded, nor do all of them actually meet the, the definition as far as timeline. And I'll, we'll talk about that later. But mostly, there's a year 2000 date. Those islands that were created after the 2000, year 2000, in some cases, don't qualify for more streamlined annexation. And then I wanted to also bring to your attention this little area up here. It is, those, those are actually two annexation applications that we have currently in planning that we're evaluating. So I did not add them to this discussion, though it, it could be said that this might be considered a, an island based on LAFCO. But it may not be considered one that we could annex easily because it is farmland. It's not currently all developed. So why maintaining county islands isn't preferable? Service gaps can occur, like refuges, tree trimming, cleaning the, you know, cleaning streets, street cleaning. County-approved infrastructure can fail, leading to city support anyway. So the city actually provides some water and sewer, as mentioned, for some of the current islands because of this. Public safety or city service inefficiencies or confusion can exist. Not so much for the city or county staff, but for those living in the islands or visiting people at the islands. So you might have somebody visiting or a new resident who just knows they're in Merced, but not realize, oh, they're actually not within the city. And so that could cause some confusion as to who would be supporting them for whatever their needs are. To annex county islands, the city must consider disadvantaged unincorporated communities. You might hear them as culptucks. I don't prefer to call them that because I feel that, that might not emphasize what really they are, which is disadvantaged unincorporated communities. This map here is actually based on the county SB 244 analysis. That is a Senate bill that requires jurisdictions to look at where the disadvantaged unincorporated communities are and create some plans, how to support them, usually through our housing element. But this shows you where our current county islands are in relation to the county disadvantaged unincorporated communities based on their analysis. Landowners, residents, and registered voters can protest the annexation. 12 or more voters within the boundaries, a protest, a protest can be filed. 25 to 50% of registered voters, or more than 25% of the landowners by assessed value. So that would be, you could have a large piece of property with no improvements actually be assessed for less, even though it's more square footage than, say, an improved piece of property that's smaller but is actually worth more. And that, that property owner with the smaller property but more improved would actually have more weight in the, in the conversation. And with that, if those things happen, an election is required. Fewer than 25% protests, annexation proceeds without election. So up to the, if less than 25% of protests, then the, then the annexation can proceed. But if over 50% of protests, annexation is denied outright. So there's, there's a real desire to engage the, those owners and voters that live within the boundary of the annexed area to be able to move that annexation, that proposed annexation forward. Protest proceedings are waived if the annexation is proposed by resolution of the annexing city, the island is 150 acres or less in size, the island is surrounded or substantially surrounded by the annexing city, the island is not gated, not a gated community where services are currently provided by a community services district, the island is substantially developed or developing availability to public utilities, presence of the public improvements or the presence of physical improvements. So it needs to be fairly developed or close to that. The island is receiving benefits from the annexing city or will benefit from the city. The island is not prime agricultural land, and the island was not created after January 1st, 2000. That's sort of, that's the key for one of our annexation evaluation properties, areas. The annexation procedure after the City Council approval. There'd be an application to LAFCO, usually submitted by the property owners, the city or the district. Depend, you know, but typically, we, the city, when we're working with an applicant for an annexation, we help with that process. So we usually submit it on behalf of the property owner. The environmental review or SEQA, LAFCO may act as a lead agency or defer the city or district. It is the city that is usually the lead agency, I mean, more often than not. Almost always because LAFCO has no control of land use designation or regulations. Now, occasionally, LAFCO could be the lead agency, but in our experience here, we usually hold that role. Notice in public hearing. The LAFCO must provide notice to all affected parties, which are the voters or the landowners. And public hearing is required per the Cortez and Knox bill. LAFCO decision, approve, approve with conditions or deny. Election if required, we talked about election earlier. Conducted to confirm consent of property owners or voters. And then recordation and filing. The annexation is filed with the county recorder and then the Secretary of State and then other agencies like the Board of Equalization, which would work with the taxation changes that could happen. So what I'm asking is that you would provide planning staff guidance and next steps and have the conversation. I do have Bill Nicholson here from LAFCO, in case you have some specific questions about that process. And I'd be happy to answer any of those questions, and I know Bill is available as well.
Any questions for Johnny? Jennifer, anything from the public at this time?
I do have one from Ashley Marie Suarez.
All right, go ahead, Ashley. You ready? You're ready. And Bill, if I could ask you to weigh in as well as possible. Good evening, Ashley.
Good evening, council members, mayor, city manager, and city attorney. In light of the agenda item, we wanted to remind the city that many residents have made comments about the drier contaminated water wells in each septic tanks, as well as the lack of sidewalks and public lighting. In conversations with residents, they made it very clear that folks that live in these unincorporated county areas were not interested in an annexation at the time. As a reminder, last year, the city manager, mayor, former supervisor Spinoza, and former CEO Mendez joined my colleagues and I to discuss how the city and the county could collaborate to install these very, very critical pieces of infrastructure that are missing in these county areas that are well within the city's sphere of influence in a way that would essentially avoid annexation at the request of community members. On the county side, there was a feasibility study initiated for sidewalk, stormwater drainage, and potential road widening just on South P Street. And unfortunately, this doesn't address all of the streets that these issues persist in, nor does it address the missing and necessary water and sewer infrastructure across all of these areas. So after that meeting and subsequent meetings, we got as far as the city committing to apply for funding for the planning portion of the water extension project, not wastewater. And leadership council knocked on countless doors to conduct a survey in some of these county islands. And we handed over that data that we collected so that the city could submit the application. However, due to a lack of state funding, the application did not move forward. So we urge that not only does the city keep its promise to apply once again for funding for service extension planning, but that it sees the project for water and sewer through and eventually apply for construction funding as well. On a separate note, I want to point out that the LAFCO SB 244 map that is included in this item was a little bit different or vastly different from the map that's included in the SB 244 analysis published for public review in March of 2024, alongside the first draft of the housing element. And we hope that since it was previously stated by staff that the SB 244 analysis would be adopted concurrently with the housing element, whenever that may be, that the SB 244 analysis has revisions made to reflect the new LAFCO map of county islands, along with a proper analysis on water availability, wastewater services, stormwater drainage, and structural fire protection within each disadvantaged community. In summary, we ask that you do a proper SB 244 analysis on these disadvantaged unincorporated communities and meet with community members or host a community input meeting to discuss alternatives to annexation, such as a service extension, before making any decisions or providing staff with any direction that may force residents to go down a path that they actually don't want to go down. Please feel free to reach out to me with any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. You're probably work on this. And Johnny referenced that Bill was here. Bill, if you'd come up, introduce yourself, just.
Johnny, can you put it back on the slide that shows the, the island areas?
That one, or would you like that one?
That one, thank you so much. I just wanted to address a few of the comments that were made, and thank you, Ashley, for presenting. You're correct, the slide that you saw for disadvantaged communities is an older one, and you're absolutely correct. We've done a more recent one, which would be incorporated into the general plan update. And so there is more relevant new information. This was a much older one. So the assignment here is not exactly the same one that you were addressing. The council has to look specifically at island annexations that are surrounded, not looking at incorporating development in the sphere that could be served, different assignments, right? So here we're looking at purely island annexations, not providing services to unincorporated areas that potentially could be served. So a little bit different approach. So I just want to make sure that we clarify that tonight, so that you're aware of that. So in terms of like what our services we provide, let's just kind of think about it at a broad level here, real quickly here. Fire, police, water, refuse, sewer, those are main services. Other things that are amenities that you might have in a neighborhood are some of the things that Ashley mentioned. You're going to have streetlights, storm drainage, sidewalks, those types of things. We currently have a lot of neighborhoods in our community, and I'm going to point perhaps to District 4, hate to say, where we have a lot of areas that currently don't have sidewalks, right? And then they're missing streetlights. So we already have a mixture of areas we've annexed over the years that don't have all these same amenities. But those areas do have police, they do have fire. They do have refuse by us. We did know as we went through this exercise that there are a lot of areas that are already in these county islands that we represented here tonight that already have city water services. And a lot of them right now already have fire by mutual aid by our contract. So they already have two of kind of the big four services. And so if we were to proceed forward with the annexation, it would automatically get police and refuse. So there, there, we just want to make sure, it's hard to kind of portray like what they have and what they don't have. So this is kind of an academic discussion tonight at a very high level. So I apologize that it's hard to kind of wrap your hands or, or mind around all of it because it is detailed. You almost have to go neighborhood by neighborhood to kind of go through each one in some detail at a map level to go through it. But that is a level that we could go through if you wanted to, because each one is very different in terms of what it has. The one thing that I would just add, and I know that Councilmember Smith and I have talked about this. In a lot of these areas that have been brought in over the years, they don't have streetlights, they don't have sidewalks, and they're missing these amenities, especially sewer. We saw a lot of areas in the community that still have septic tanks. You need to have residents in those locations actually agree to create benefit areas or assess themselves to create infrastructure. So they're basically assessing themselves for the, the needs to upgrade. So this is not a fix tonight to fix all the problems. This is kind of an objective look at what's out there, things that you could do. But in terms of But in terms of broad perspective, we wanted to at least show you where these things exist and talk about them at a very academic level. With that being said, I'll turn it over to Bill. And one thing we wanted to point out too is there's a very streamlined process for inhabited, surrounded, substantially surrounded islands that you can consider. If you wanted us to look into some more, we could definitely talk about it at a neighborhood by neighborhood, area by area level to get you more details.
Councilmember Dupont had a question. Is it okay to wait? Mr. Nichols?
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mayor and Councilman and Scott. Yeah, I just want to say one other point with Lafco, we're countywide, so there's six incorporated cities within Merced County, and we're implementing state law with local interpretation and policies that the state mandates that each individual of Lafco, Merced County is very different than LA County, than Orange County, than Butte County. So we interpret it and have policies to support things that meet state law, but they're targeted to local situations more. And Merced is not like Los Banos or like Outwater necessarily, or Dos Palos. So your situation is different, but we, as Lafco, deal with all cities. And in this effort, this has been talked about, I've been with Lafco a long time, and talking about islands and peninsulas and disadvantaged communities is ongoing forever, basically. And the citizens who are in the county are the ones paying the price, in a sense, of a lot of discussions and ideas, but not getting anywhere. So I say getting anywhere because the conditions for me are the same, and they have lack of water in a lot of places, or they're on septic that fails. One item that we do do a lot of is actually out of boundary services, which is you're providing the services to the city, it's typically water or sewer. When the well fails or the septic fails, and county environmental health is right in the middle of all this, they have to prove the wells and the septics, and if the property can't meet it, there's too many septic tanks within the vicinity, you can't put a new well in, or the parcel's too small to put a new septic in, then the city's been willing, which is great, to provide the service. And one thing that the city does, and all the cities do, is if you're providing the service, that landowner is signing an agreement that they will not protest an annexation. So to the greater neighborhoods of people that want your sewer and water, and they don't want annex, I would recommend against that as Lafco, because we actually need to find that the service provision to urban services for an area in the county, those services are in anticipation of a future annexation. We have to make a finding to that. And if we say, oh, no, they never got annex, then you're not supposed to extend the service, and you can't provide it without Lafco's approval. You cannot do it without coming to Lafco. And our interpretation of the state law, either through our policies or the direct wording of the law in the state, we can't get around that. And Lafco, for those of you who don't know, Lafco is made up of elected officials primarily. There's two city council members, and your mayor was a longstanding member of Lafco, a good member, I might add. So his efforts to follow up on islands is part of that. And then you have the two board supervisors and a public member that are appointed by those other four members. So it's kind of a unified city-county approach, and as Lafco, we're independent from both. We're housed in the county building, but I'm an employee answering to the commission, not to the county. So our goal would be that you would be looking at these areas for annexation. If there's times you're providing services to it, you need to have an agreement that that service is provided without the right for someone to protest later, because we can't approve it otherwise. So then the issue is, well, how do you get the landlords to support it if they don't want to be annexed? And really, from my view, in my years as a planner, the urban services are really important. So to the degree that you can get grants, you cooperate and coordinate with the county on mutual, you know, not mutual aid, but mutual services, I know you're doing it mutually for fire, but things like drainage, storm drainage, the county does a lot of storm drainage. I live in the county, and you have a storm drainage pond that the county maintains, but it has to go into Bear Creek, and that flows in with the city's drainage, and MID, of course, is involved. So you have a lot of partnerships in providing services, and that would continue. So this effort, I would see, is Lafco would be a partner to the city, the county should be a partner, so you're negotiating what services are going to be provided and how, and to the degree that the county can, well, yeah, say, they don't provide the sewer and water, the county's not in that business, some counties they are, Fresno they do, so that really is competition, but here they don't. But what you do have the ability to do is revenue sharing arrangements that are very painful for the city and the county to sit down and negotiate, like the UC and VST property. With an island, you can negotiate a separate agreement with the county on tax sharing for that specific island. In that case, maybe the county, I'm not speaking for the county at all, but the city, you could try to get the county to provide a bigger piece of the property tax, or there's probably no sales tax for most of these, but there could be some on Highway 59, I don't know there is. And then that extra money could go to the city to provide services that otherwise that land isn't really supporting as much, but it benefits the county that the city just takes it over, and you're going to do the police, and you know, definitely you'd be doing the fire then. So this is a long-running effort or longstanding desire, and now it's a study or potential study, but I think it's in a cooperative way with, you know, definitely Lafco staff and the city and the county working together, and talking with, you know, landowners and the other service providers, this would be a good effort to investigate. And again, it's a big issue with a lot of different neighborhoods, maybe targeting neighborhoods where the need is there. We've had a lot of discussions over the Black Rascal Creek neighborhood, tiny lots on septic, they have to pump them all the time, half, not half, many lots are being served by the city water already and many aren't. So there's all these, there's a community well that's bad out there where they're constantly having to upgrade it. So there's a lot of benefits as a government body you could provide through investigating annexation and working with the county to try to find a way to achieve that. And then it's really solving a statewide goal too, because this is, the state's pushing for this in all the cities in our county and across the whole state. So I want to say I appreciate the effort that you're even investigating this and having this discussion, and Lafco would love to be a partner for this effort. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you for being here tonight. Councilmember Dupont.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad that we're talking about this issue. I think it's an important issue. Like has been said before, we are providing services to some of these areas. Some are getting water and fire, some are getting water, some are getting fire. So I think it's important, but I think the next steps that we need to get to is what are the priority areas? What are those areas that we have multiple services that are overlapping in the unincorporated areas? So we can figure out, you know, we can probably pare down some of these islands, may not be able to get to all of them in the recent years, but if we can focus and make priorities to those that are already receiving services and multiple services at that city services, I think that's the way forward. So it would be good to see, you know, what areas or what that priority list is, what areas are receiving the water services, or what type of services from the city, so that we can actually have a further discussion on where we go forward from here on those priority properties. Because I think trying to grasp all the properties and do all of them is going to be a tall task, but if we focus a little bit more, I think that would be beneficial, include, including make sure that we have agreements with those areas that have services of non-contest would be helpful. And I'll keep my comments at that.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Johnny and Bill, for a very informative presentation. I want to take a couple of minutes and talk about what we don't see on here, which is the law enforcement aspect of county islands. In my career as a sheriff's deputy, I often mostly actually had what was called Beat 3, which went from Franklin Road all the way out to Arbolita, which included the city of Merced. 99% of the time, I was the only deputy assigned to that, there were no rovers. And I will tell you that I would rarely hang out in Merced. I hung out around the Beechwood area, which gave me the opportunity to respond to Beechwood and to the Beat 4 Winton area, where I would back up the Beat 4 deputy. I was also responsible for backing up the Beat 1 Planata deputy. So I rarely hung out in Beat 3. So if there's a call to one of these county islands, I was at least 10 to 15 minutes away. An in-progress call, we would often ask the city to start towards there, which they were always good at doing, but we didn't always do that. We'd like to, you know, use the you catch and you clean them philosophy and get to the caller ourselves. So those county islands lack the same responsiveness that the city people get. You know, somewhere just across the street, the city's going to respond right away with probably more than one officer, and across the street, I'm going to be 10 minutes away and it's just going to be me, with maybe a backup another 20 minutes away. So it's an aspect that I think if I lived in a county island, I'd be very concerned about and happy to see the city annex. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for the presentation. I know a number of us have been asking to get to this kind of tipping point on this issue for a while, so I'm very glad that we are here. You know, to me, the threshold policy questions are easy. You know, should we start a process of evaluating and annexing county islands? The answer is yes. Do county island residents deserve a city level of service across the board? Yes. Does the city deserve to fairly acquire the compensation for the services it provides? Yes. I'm not sure that that's currently happening in all instances. You know, so to me, I kind of want to know how we begin. I'm not sure I have the answer for that. I'm not the career planner, but I mean, it seems to me, you know, state law requirements, particularly considering disadvantaged, unincorporated communities, also the need, just to practical terms, to negotiate with the county. I don't think it's as easy as just, for example, saying, let's go after Harris Acres. It seems to me that we need to pair or group properties, if you will, so that it pencils for the city and the county, and we're also doing our diligence for the, what'd you call them, the ducks? Maybe you should call them dukes or something. So, you know, I think there's a next level presentation of options from city staff that we should consider, because I don't know that we're the subject matter experts, but I would like to start building some momentum, and I've said this before, I mean, anecdotally, I hear from county island residents around D4 that they want to be annexed. And obviously, I'm not speaking for every single resident, but whatever I can do to help drive this discussion, you know, focus groups in collaboration with you, I'll be happy to do that, because I think this sounds like a long process, and I think we are not helping ourselves by not getting started now.
Yeah. Mr. City Manager.
Councilmember, you're right, it's a long process. I mean, part of the reason why this hasn't been taken care of is it's not easy, right? I mean, if it was easy, it would've been done. So one thing, a couple of things I can suggest is you do have a housing and planning subcommittee of the council, and that could be an area where we could have some more in-depth technical meetings to talk about this. We could actually use some of our GIS layers and put them up, and we could walk through neighborhoods, we could look and see who's got water, who's got other infrastructure, who's got the fire service areas. Also, I don't want to get too far ahead in the discussion without really bringing our county, I know Bill's here tonight for Lafco, but we really haven't talked to the county about this. I mean, it's on your agenda just because you asked to have it discussed, but I haven't told them that we're having the discussion. I don't want them to get, you know, freaked out about some big thing that's happening. This is very cursory, very high level, there's really no discussion, let alone the residents of these areas, right? Like if people see these red areas and think we're going to go out and annex them tomorrow, that's not the case, right? There's a lot to be done here. So I think a good place to kind of start this would be through your subcommittee. Also, you have a great opportunity through your general plan, right? I think that the mechanics of the annexation are not daunting, they just take money and time. You need a legal description, we have to get somebody on contract to do the SEQA environmental work, we've got to pay some fees for Lafco, we're going to prepare resolutions and agreements to go forward, but you can't do all this, right? We need to break it down into pieces that we could take on that make sense. And so perhaps we could test, when I say test, like do an economic viability for a smaller area, we could kind of show you what maybe a candidate might look like to see what the return might be for the city, for the current tax sharing agreement, so you can see the numbers before doing a commitment that's really full-fledged. So I think that's a good approach to look at it, and so I might suggest the subcommittee and then letting us work with the county counterparts, let them know like kind of what we're doing for evaluation purposes.
Councilmember Smith.
So I completely agree about bringing our county partners and having a deliberative process, and I like what I heard from the city manager. I just, it occurs to me that I think we've already impaneled a county island subcommittee. I don't know, maybe we don't stick with that, but it just seems to me that, looking at the map, D4, D1 and D2 are impacted, so that should be the council members who are, if there's going to be a subcommittee approach, that should be the way we go.
Okay, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with City Manager McBride and Councilmember Smith. I wonder if we give direction to staff, could that be to maybe inventory the islands and see where we stand as far as where their services are now, what needs sewer, what needs water, things like that, so we can begin to prioritize where we want to start?
Yeah, I think everybody seems to be in agreement, and I would agree as well. I think the right course, I think you have 11 different sites right here, each one has its own story in a lot of ways, each one's going to have different types of services provided, each one's going to have potentially different infrastructure needs, opportunities maybe to grandfather some infrastructure in, some areas don't have sidewalks, maybe they don't necessarily need or desire sidewalks, for example, and that could be a big infrastructure saving in part of them. So I think each one kind of has its own story, each one's a little bit complex, and evaluate each one on its own, looking at services, looking at potential revenue to provide for the increased services that we're providing, infrastructure needs, conversations with the county, and then at that point, we get a plan as to which ones we're going to target, and then do some community outreach and go from there, it seems. What do you think, Bill? Johnny?
Yeah, we can, I was just going to say, I was going to say, yeah, I can put together, planning staff can put together a table showing each, you know, each area, how it satisfies Lafco, maybe if it doesn't, what services we already provide, and we could even go into a little deeper to find out if any of those services that are provided actually contain a protest waiver. That way, you know, that could create a little bit of a streamline there, but I'd be happy with your direction to be able to work with Bill, to work with the county, to provide these things for you and bring it back.
I saw something, an article the other day, City of Modesto was essentially doing the same work and doing the same thing, and they had cost estimates from 2009 that it would be roughly $133 million to bring all that, that's 2009, and then the recent cost estimates, which offered a little bit of an expanded zone, were $1 billion to get everything up to city standards. So I think we've got to obviously be sensitive to the costs, cost estimates, and then the neighborhood impact as well. Who is? Shane, that was an old one, is that new?
It's old.
Okay. Mike, that was older, new. Councilmember Dupont.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have no issues referencing this to a subcommittee as well. I would join in Councilmember Smith's point. I think the majority are in 4, 1 and 2, or the mayor would want to join, but I think that would be the best way forward, since maybe housing and planning may not be best suited for the county-island discussion.
All right. That sounded like a motion to me. I'd be happy to join, I was the one who suggested this a little while ago too, so happy to join if not. Certainly, you know, given the location of the majority of these, Councilmember Smith, if he so desires, should be involved because primarily impacts his district. There's a lot down in District 1 and some on the fringe of District 2 as well. So. So I'm happy to be involved, but if unless you guys want to want to run with it, certainly good with that as well, too. So Shane, you're saying you want to be involved?
I would appreciate being on the subcommittee.
Darren, you, too?
Yes.
Okay. Ronnie, would you want to be involved in this or want to save me some work and be involved? Or I'm happy to do it if you don't want.
You know, I have thoughts about some of these things.
All right. What do you got?
But we have a case, I know of an area that's at the end of a street, and they demand, I mean, every time they talk to me, it's, we need lights, we need this, we need that, we need this. Okay? And I says, fine. I said, I understand that. But you don't, what you don't understand is you don't pay city taxes. Well, we pay taxes. I says, look, get the tax form that you get from the county, show it to me, and I'll tell you whether it's county or city. And then we have a place to start. But don't come at me every time you see me and say, hey, why don't we have this? You don't have it because you don't want it to the city. I'm glad to see this come up. I'm glad to see this thing come up. I really am. And I am for something like that. But you have to realize also that not everybody in that area wants to be a part of this. Not all of them want to be in that. So you have to you have to go to your neighbors and say, hey, listen, we need some of this. There is a way to get it, but we all have to work together on it. I'm not a bad guy, believe me. You think I am, but I'm not a bad guy, really. I grew up in Merced. I lived on South Merced. I live in South Merced. I live on property that my folks owned. I have two sisters that live here. Well, there's only three of us left. I'm the oldest one. I have two younger sisters. And we live less than a block apart from each other. So I know what this is. I do. I do. But let me tell you what we did when we had no streets there. I lived on Tenth and P, and I lived on my corner, my house is on the corner of Tenth and P. I lived on the corner of Eleventh and P there, that was where my original home was, with my mother and father and my brothers and sisters. So what happened here was years ago, and I can't even think of the year it was, but when we had our house built, we had it built on the corner where I live, still live in the same place, and we had no street. We had no street. It was nothing but mud, water. So what we had to do was we had to park at my mother-in-law and father-in-law's house. My wife and I had to walk home. There were no sidewalks out there. But what they did was we did, and I wasn't a part of actually getting it done, but I was involved in it because we had a district called Improvement District Number Fifteen. And we paid for it. We paid for it. Not the city, not the county. We paid to have it done. And we had a person that lived across town, and he was in, he was a realtor. Okay? And he came to a meeting of a group that I belong to, and he says, you guys don't want to do that. You don't need to do that because you can't afford it. Well, lo and behold, most of the people in that area said, hey, we need sidewalks, we need roads. And we voted for it, and we got it. Nobody handed it to us. We bought it. We paid for it. The house is still there. My house is still there. My sidewalk is still there, but we paid for it. That's my story. That's, that's, I still live there. My kids are gone, but we still live there. My wife and I still live there.
Thank you, Ron.
It's not a mansion. It's not a mansion. It's a three-bedroom home, which we added on to and made it a little larger. So and I, I know what being poor is. We weren't drastically poor, and we did have water out there, you know? Where I lived when I was growing up, we did have water out there. But I can remember when we were kids, we had no sidewalks, and the banks were this big, deep, and cars are going through it, there was splashing water all over the place.
All right.
No, no, that's not us. That's not us. Thank you for listening to me.
No, thanks, sir. Appreciate your appreciate your words. All right. Would anybody else be interested in, I think the direction is, again, correct me if I'm wrong, is to look at each of the eleven listed here individually, work with staff to prepare some sort of individualized assessment, weighing the services provided already, the services that need to be added, the potential costs and revenue. And then we'll have a subcommittee of up to three. We have Councilmember Dupont, Councilmember Smith already. Was anybody else interested in serving on that subcommittee? Sure? All right. All right, I'll do it. I'm happy to do it. But Sarah, or Fu, or Mike, anybody? Yes, there is. All right, more work. Okay. So three of us will work with staff to prepare individualized assessments, bring it back to council. Council at that point will say, all right, we're going to, the subcommittee can make recommendations, council will give the blessing, go forward here, go forward there. More importantly, Bill will have to give his blessing as well.
Hit me up anytime.
And then hopefully we'll make some of those long-desired goals that you've mentioned, hopefully we can actually make a little bit of progress. So if I think we do so, to Councilmember Dupont's point earlier, we have to be strategic and have to be focused on what we're going to achieve. All right. Need a motion or is that good enough? That's good? All right.
Thank you.
Craig says it's good, John. Thank you, Johnny. Thank you, Bill.
Okay, agenda item L, business, L one, consideration of the Merced Regional Airport Authority recommendation for the SkyWest Charter, Option One, Contour Airlines, Option Two, and Advanced Air, Option Three, as the airline carrier to serve the Merced Yosemite Regional Airport under the Essential Air Service and make a recommendation to the U.S. Department of Transportation.
Can I maybe call for a quick break?
Yeah. Couple minutes?
Yeah. Thank you.
I will have a short break. But we'll be back in five minutes.
It is one minute to nine, and we'll ask our deputy city manager to address the council on essential air service providers.
Good evening, council members. Tonight's presentation will be delivered in two parts. I'll open up, and then we have the designated hitter, our airport manager, Rhett Williams, to talk about the carrier selection process. So, once every four years, we have the opportunity to make a recommendation to the Department of Transportation on who will be our next carrier for essential air service. So, this would be those who would be flying out. We would choose an airline to go from Yosemite Regional Airport to destinations such as Los Angeles or Las Vegas. We have four qualified carriers vying for the opportunity. Tonight, you are being asked to provide a recommendation to the U.S. Department of Transportation on who will be our next EAS carrier. Please keep in mind, the U.S. Department of Transportation actually makes the final decision. What is essential air service? So, deregulation hit 1978. So, in order to provide air service to small regional airports, such as the Merced-Yosemite Regional Airport, they created the EAS program. Merced has been part of the EAS program since 1982, and we've had carriers such as Boutique Air. We've also had Advanced, excuse me, Boutique. We've also had Scenic, and currently, we are served by Advanced Air. In May 2025, the Department of Transportation issued a request for proposal calling for carriers to propose on serving Merced as an essential air service airport. We received four, excuse me, four carriers responded to the DOT's request. And at that time, we created, the Airport Authority created a subcommittee. The subcommittee was made up of three Airport Authority members and our two airport staff members. Amanda Williams, Economic Development Associate, and I, we served as advisors throughout the entire process. The Airport Authority Subcommittee then held a meeting to go over all the proposals that were submitted, then held interviews with each of the carriers on their proposals. Subsequently, they went before the Regional Airport Authority and provided a recommendation to the Airport Authority, which then deliberated, heard some public testimony, and then ultimately is now recommending to you, the city council, on the airlines of their preference by priority. Again, tonight, you will have the opportunity to make that recommendation to the Department of Transportation with them making the final decision. The Airport Authority recommended to the city council to, by priority and ranking, consider SkyWest Charter with service from Merced Airport to LAX, Los Angeles, and to Las Vegas, Harry Reid International Airport. The second being Contour Airlines, which again would provide service to Los Angeles International and to Harry Reid International Airport in Las Vegas. The third being Advanced Airline with their current service flying to Hawthorne Municipal Airport to the Las, excuse me, to the Las Vegas Airport, Harry Reid. Now, keep in mind, this is the recommendation of the Airport Authority. You, as the council, have the opportunity and the privilege to reprioritize the ranking or consider another ranking of your choice that you could then send forward to the U.S. DOT. Has this happened in the past? Yes, it has. Whether it may be serviced to different airports. For example, Contour Airlines proposed service not only to LAX, but also to Phoenix. That may be an alternative that you can propose. Or you could change the ranking that was provided by the Airport Authority. So, now, I'm going to, our main goal at this point, as was agreed upon by the Subcommittee, the Airport Authority, and by staff, is we are looking for an airline that's going to take us at the 10,000-plus employment mark so that we can get that priority funding from the FAA, and we can reinvest that money into our airport. So, with that being said, Mr. Williams will now discuss the air carrier selection process.
Rhett, if you could hold for one second, and Councilor Harris had a question for Deputy City Manager Quintero.
For information about EAS, is it based on population proximity to other airports? When does Merced fall out of that?
So, it's proximity to major hubs. And right now, we are just at the cusp of a major hub, with Fresno being our major hub to the south, and then Sacramento to the north. So, we currently qualify that. There is a population factor in it, but they more so look at the ability to be able to provide service to a major hub from a smaller regional airport such as ours.
Which isn't going to change in the near future.
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Any councilman?
Good evening, oh, good evening, council, mayor. Thank you for having me. Thank you, Frank, for the beginning of the presentation. So, air carrier selection process with the demonstrate the reliability of the applicant providing scheduled service, air service to our community. The contractual marketing, co-chair, and interline agreements, which means checking your luggage to your prospective carriers in your connecting airport with a larger service carrier hub. The total compensation proposed by the air carrier by providing scheduled air service under the selection is proposed to the DOT. So, these are the questions the Subcommittee gave to the airlines when they had their interviews separate. So, we had the same questions for each of them there. Please tell us how you would demonstrate reliability in providing scheduled air service? What contractual marketing arrangements have you made with a large carrier to ensure its service beyond the hub airport? What interline agreements have you made with the larger carriers to allow passengers and cargo to be transferred by the larger carriers through one reservation ticket and baggage check-in? I.e., checking in with a single-service carrier and then going on to connect? So, what steps have you taken to understand the air service needs and expectations of the community? And what is your plan to market to your service to the community of Merced specifically? Here, the proposed service from Merced to the respective carriers and routes for Boutique. We had four bids, five bids, but four bids total. So, it's good to have, we have some really healthy competition here. We have Boutique Airlines, SkyWest Airlines, SkyWest Charters, Advanced Airlines, and Contour Airlines. Boutique proposed Merced SFO, Merced LAX, Merced Vegas, SkyWest Airlines, LAX, LAX SFO, LAX, Las Vegas. SkyWest Charters, LAX, LAX SFO, LAX and Las Vegas. Advanced Airlines, Hawthorne, which is HHR, and Las Vegas, Hawthorne and Oakland, Hawthorne, San Francisco, and Contour Airlines with LAX, LAX, LAX Phoenix, LAX in Vegas. I know, that's a mouthful, right? The next one is the type of planes and seating capacity for each carrier. We have Boutique Airlines with the Pilatus PC-12, eight seats and nine seat configurations. SkyWest Airlines CRJ-200 with 50 seats. SkyWest Charters with the CRJ-200 with 30 seats. Advanced Airlines with their bid with the King Air 350 and their Dojet, the 328. That's nine seats respective and 30 seats. Contour Airlines with their Embraer 135 with 30 seats. The RAA's recommendation, they came, as we already discussed, was Las Vegas and Vegas, Las Vegas and LAX, Contour Airlines, Las Vegas and LA, and Advanced Airlines, Hawthorne and Las Vegas. And again, the whole purpose of this exercise with the DOT recommendation is to grow our airport. We just finished, we're almost finished building a brand-new terminal. Very excited and very lucky that we have that here with Merced-Yosemite Regional Airport. And we are to plan to grow that airport there and our economics of the city. And to do so, we need to get our employments up to the 10,000 mark, which then allot us to the DOT a higher grantability. And that is all I have for you all.
Thank you, Rhett. Any questions for our airport manager? Any additional questions for our deputy city manager? Okay, so Jennifer, anything from the pub?
I do have four request-to-speak forms. If I can get Levi Stockton, Barbara Hunt, Ben Munson, and Morgana Dallas.
Good evening.
Good evening, yeah, three minutes. Just checking to see if you have more time, but I guess city attorney says.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, thanks for having me. Levi Stockton, CEO, founder of Advanced Air. We've been your airline for the last four years. When we took over, it was in the midst of COVID. We had a prior operator that really ran the program down, and we've, I think, you know, knocked it out of the park the last four years. We brought up employments. We've grown all across, pulling from, you know, Sonora down to South Fresno, Merced. People are coming now to Merced to fly. Flying into Hawthorne is a huge hit. And we've done some, you know, surveying of our customers that you guys have seen with five stars. People are loving the product. But to the bids, there's, there's three main bids here. The first two are solely in a 30-passenger and only 12 round trips a week, or 24. So, what that means is you would lose about three and a half flights a day. That's three and a half options to get to or from Merced. That means you would only have four days a week to serve Vegas and only one flight a day to LAX. So, you know, if you had a meeting tomorrow morning in LA, you would have to have left this morning, get down there for your meeting tomorrow morning, then wait that night to catch the next flight back the next morning. Or if you're connecting in and out of LA and your flight gets in in the evening, you have to wait till the next day to catch a flight back in the morning. So, to improve employments, I don't think in any way reducing the number of flights is going to do that. We've seen an increase in employments. And I think you saw in your email blocks is over, you know, almost 500 people have sent emails asking to keep Advanced Air. So, those are people that are flying on the product, that love the product. They understand, would they rather have more flights? Or would they rather have a bigger airplane? And undoubtedly, everybody would like more flights. So, we're here. We want to be here. Our bid includes a King Air 350 only, and our price cut in half to $75 a ticket. So, that's the feedback we heard from the community, and those are the changes we made in our bid. Again, when it's time to grow, we have bigger airplanes. We'll be here to grow with you, but Merced is really important to us. We're positioned with multiple aircraft in the area. Hawthorne is our home base. And we've been here, like I said, for four years through some of the hardest years in aviation. And unlike some of the other competitors, we pulled out of no communities. We didn't put it back up for bid. We did what we said we're going to do. So, we hope that you recommend us to do that again for another four years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. Hunt, welcome.
Thank you, mayor, city council. Appreciate you taking the time to hear from us. I'm Barbara Hunt, the VP of Business Operations with Advanced Air. First of all, I'd like to remind you that we have been here for four years. We've been very dedicated to the community of Merced. We've gotten very involved in the community. And I know you got bombarded with emails. We, we are proud that we have so many loyal customers here and, and members of the community. And we've, we've hit it out of the park with customer service ratings, et cetera. As Levi indicated, we've dropped our prices now for this new bid process. But even so, our load factors still have room to move. So, we're, we're probably 65% to 70% load factors, and that's doing 24 flights a week, 24 round trips per week, 48 flights. And with that, dropping that to 12 flights a week means you lose 1,248 flights a year, and you have less frequency. So, you may end up with flying empty flights because the demand is not yet there for the big airplanes. We will have big airplanes when they're ready. We currently operate 30-passenger jets. We just don't think that it's quite yet ready for Merced to get to the big airplanes. We need to build the momentum and build the community engagement. Secondarily, just wanted to point out, within the essential air service programs, the three that are listed in order in this bid process or in the selection by the RAA, the first two will require the city of Merced to waive some rights within the traditional EAS program. Either waiving, moving out of essential air service into alternate essential air service, which requires the community to manage the grant with the DOT and then pay the airline directly. Or alternatively, the community has to waive the right to scheduled service. Both of those things are outside of the traditional EAS program. And it's a little unclear what that means to the community, but I recommend that you check with the DOT because both of those first two options require you to make changes and waive potential terms and rights that go with the essential air service program. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Welcome, Mr. Munson.
Hi. Good evening, Ben Munson, President of Contour Airlines. Thank you so much for having me here today. Just want to be here to represent the 800-plus employees at Contour that are so excited about the opportunity to potentially be in this community. We've just got a fundamentally different opinion of what this community can be. And we absolutely believe that it can support 30-seat regional jet service. It's what we proposed in our bid. We forecasted twice the passenger count of what exists today. And that's based on our experience, and it's not something we're just throwing out to the city council. It's something that actually impacts the subsidy. And it's why we're the lowest subsidy request of any of the carriers in front of the, the council today. A couple of important things that I want the, the city council, I think, to focus in on that are so important and maybe not highlighted by the Subcommittee is first, in the eligibility for essential air service. There is a threshold that the Department of Transportation sets. For this community, it's $650. So, Advanced, the incumbent, who's a wonderful airline and absolutely has done a great job with this community, the lowest cost bid is for $654. The proposed bid from those recommend per passenger, the proposed bid that was put up there as option three is over $900 per passenger. That gives the Department of Transportation the right to remove Merced from the essential air service program, and in two years, the obligation to do that. So, moving forward with that recommendation is absolutely jeopardizing Merced's place in the essential air service program. The other thing that I wanted to highlight is, I think, what was briefly touched on in the matrix is that both SkyWest and SkyWest Charter bids. SkyWest Airlines with their 50-seat regional jet cannot serve this community. And I think there might be a little bit of mix-up as terms of the capabilities and the operating setup of those two individual entities. SkyWest Charter, which is the carrier that has been recommended and is proposed right now as the number-one option, does not have any EAS markets. They do not have a booking website. They do not have an active interline. You compare that to Contour Airlines, who's been doing this for 10 years reliably with three different interline partners, American, United, and Alaska. So, we're so excited about the, the prospect of being in this community. We're the one of the three proposals that thinks we can get over 10,000 employments in this community, more than double what exists today with the existing carrier, and a 30% increase versus what SkyWest Charter has proposed at lower fares than what exists with free bags, cabin class aircraft. And I just, I think that there's so much potential here, and we'd be very excited to be a part of it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks for being here, sir. Good evening. Welcome.
Okay. Hi, my name is Morgana Dallas, and I'm here to support Advanced Airline as a customer. First and foremost, to me, flying into Hawthorne is the biggest perk that Advanced Airline has to offer. I don't know if any of you have flown into Hawthorne before, but it's a great airport. It's very nice. It's small. There's no TSA. When you land, your pilot hands you your luggage. It's great. Not having to deal with LAX and the hassle and traffic is absolutely amazing. Having a small child that also makes flying into LAX a little worrisome. I love the quaint ceiling that Hawthorne Airport offers without having to walk miles to get an Uber or the stress of navigating through thousands of people to get my luggage. Hawthorne also has the strength of an amazing location, such as being situated next to SoFi Stadium. Being able to show up roughly 45 minutes before my flight and not having to do TSA has been great. Upon landing, I get off the plane. I'm handed my luggage shortly after. If a larger airline replaces Advanced Airline and I have to arrive earlier, maybe an hour or so, how much time am I saving as compared to driving to LA? And now, flying home from LA, I'm, I'll need to arrive at LAX, what, two hours before? Again, at this point, I'm not saving much time. I might as well drive. My family also enjoys the daily multiple flights into Hawthorne that, that Advanced Airline offers. I particularly love the student not having to plan my family vacations around plane schedules. There's flights that are available to use every day, sometimes twice a day. I worry that changing airlines will offer less flights into LA. I have used Advanced Airline roughly 12 times over the past two years. I use their airline as getting to LA as my final destination. I don't need to fly into LAX to fly elsewhere. LA is my destination, oftentimes to Disneyland. If I fly elsewhere, I can shuttle from Hawthorne to LAX for free or drive an hour and use Fresno's airport, honestly. I've been very impressed with Advanced Airline and who they are as a company. I personally witnessed Advanced Airline taking off early if all passengers are there on time. When's the last time that Southwest, you know, has done that? Advanced Airline has made flying out of Merced a complete joy and something that I hope I can continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Right, Jennifer, anyone else?
That's all we have, mayor.
Sure, you can speak. You have to fill out a green request-to-speak form. Too much work? It's a lot of work. You got to write, yeah, we got to find out your name. Yeah. All right. One more coming. Anybody else, Ms. Barajas, you want to speak on this? That's okay. Important topic.
Hi, my name's Patrick Benes. Sorry. I'm a teacher, so I'm used to speaking really loud. No, in the area, I've flown out of multiple carriers out of Merced since I was 18, and Advanced Air has made it amazing. But one of the things I heard in discussion that was brought up is EAS. And one of the things, it caught my ear because I was starting to contemplate because I try to focus on budget because I try to focus on budget committees and such throughout the federal government. And it scares me at the idea, the idea, the idea that we're focused on something of trying to get a part of Merced Airport when, in May of 2025, the current administration has already stated that they are trying to reduce EAS funding by $300 million and adjust the mileage for local airports to within 75 miles. I don't know the distances that that would affect. But if you are trying to reach for something, and the idea is two years from now, and you have a current administration that has already cut heavily across the board areas of the federal government and requesting to the FAA to reduce by $300 million, I think it might be a bad idea to think of that as a golden goose. That's all I have to say, I just wanted to add that. Thank you for your time, sorry for the delay.
No, I appreciate it. Thanks for coming and making your comments. All right, Jennifer, is that it?
I believe so, Mayor.
Bring it back to council for discussion. Again, I want to thank everybody for their applications. Want to thank everybody for their interest in Merced, and especially thank the good folks who are here tonight. I think we have a difficult choice and a lot of very worthy air carriers to select from. We still have questions for Frank and for Airport Manager Rhett Williams. Also, too, I consulted with our city attorney. And if anybody has any questions to direct either at Advance to Mr. Stockton and Ms. Hunt or to Mr. Munson at Contour, the council is welcome to do that as well. All right, all that, I will stop blabbering and turn it over to my colleagues for their thoughts. Thoughts or questions, any discussion? Go on first, Councilor Dupont.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions of Advanced Airlines, if Levi, you could come to the podium, please. You talk about frequency, you talk about the employments. Here in Merced, have you ever canceled any flights?
Yeah, we're an airline, we definitely have canceled. But for the most part, we've recovered. We have a very high completion rate. I think we're at 98% here. And matter of fact, I mean, yesterday, two days ago, we had two pilots call in sick, and we pulled in airplanes from Phoenix and so forth and still recovered. So we have our whole fleet in Hawthorne, and our track record over the last four years shows that we complete our flights.
You talk about survey, and you, full disclosure, I've met with Levi beforehand. I've also met with Contour, and I've met with SkyWest, both Charter and Airline. When we previously met, you talked about surveying your customers, is that correct?
Yeah, we surveyed all of our customers, and we shared that survey with all of you.
Did you, have you surveyed the broader public of Merced?
You know, I think it's, you know, we don't have that contact list. We do our marketing, we pull people into our funnels, and then those are the people that are, that fly with us. But you can see that the people that do fly with us, I mean, doing a survey and having over 500 people respond is substantial.
I have no further questions for Mr. Stockton. If anybody else has questions, I don't want him to be getting up and down, but if not...
It's okay.
Thanks.
I don't think he minds, he's still, still young enough. All right, Mayor Protem Boy.
I don't have any questions. I don't know if questions when we ask first, or...
No, I think we can do both. We're through the council question portion, and now we're in discussion. So questions and/or discussion are both fair game.
Okay, well, I'll just lay out everything. So, in full disclosure, I did meet with Advanced Air and SkyWest just going over the services. And I've said this before, but, well, not in public, but I have, in my own head, you know, bringing Advanced Airlines in, in 2021, we were still in a pandemic. I feel like there was still that disadvantage of how do we maneuver flights and getting people to fly to LA or to Las Vegas. And in the very beginning, we actually had them coming, going to LAX. And I forget which year it was, they came to us asking, hey, can we please move to Hawthorne? And we granted their wish, and I think it was one of the best decisions because the amount of positive responses I have received from people that when LA is their final destination, they don't want to have to deal with LAX. I don't know the last time any of you guys have flown to LAX. I did last year, and it took about an hour and a half to just get to the Uber line after getting our luggage. So it's not fun when LA is your final destination, as stated by one of our speakers tonight. So I fully understand that. I myself have not flown Advanced Air to Hawthorne, but I have to Las Vegas a few times, and I've loved every second of it. I tell people it's the private jet experience without the private jet prices. And I think that's a very unique thing that we have here in Merced. Even myself, where I've told people word of mouth about Advanced Air is, I have some friends who live in Fresno where their daughters go to USC, and their daughters were utilizing Fresno's airport for years and to fly into LAX. And when I told them that we have an airline that comes, goes out of Merced to Hawthorne, you guys should look into it, and they were surprised of how easy it is, and now they use it all the time. So they drive to, from Fresno to Merced multiple times, either for themselves or to drop their daughters off to send them to school. So just knowing that there are individuals, when they hear about kind of like a little-known secret that we have and how they're utilizing it, I think that's great. Like I said, I've never received one complaint from anybody in regards to the service that they have provided. Doing some other research, I mean, we're giving these proposals, but it's our due diligence to look in and kind of pull back. And Advanced Air stands out as the least burdened by major FAA and NTSB safety findings or serious legal penalties. So to me, I think when we're thinking of safety for our residents, I think that's something that we need to be looking at especially. And the fact that they are submitting this proposal again for another term just shows their commitment to Merced. You know, we received over 350 emails in the last two weeks. At first, I was like, oh, my gosh, what is happening? But the fact that people took the time to fill this out just goes to show how much they enjoy the service. And I would love to see them continue on, so that's my, those are my remarks.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Boy. Councilor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me start off by saying I'm very disappointed that SkyWest Charter is not here. This seems to be like a place or time when you would come and make your case. Then I think we have a chicken, it came first, a chicken or the egg. Do we not need a jet because we don't have enough employments? Or do we not have the employments because we don't have jet service? You know, the, both the two jet services say that they can get us over 20,000 employments without breaking a sweat. I tend to, I tend to agree with that. So I think there's an untapped market here. I think there's an untapped market for people who do want to go to LAS, I'm sorry, to LAX as a hub. And that's not to say that Advance isn't serving their market and serving them well. There's a lot of people who want to do anything, not want to do anything further than go to Hawthorne, and that's, and that's good. I'll be taking them myself very shortly. Not going to tell you when because I want to actually have the flight. But, but it does serve, it does serve a market. I personally think there's a bigger market out there for a major hub. And I like the fact that I could stay in a sterile area and make that connection, and I'll probably never go to Fresno again. That's, and I've been flying out of Fresno for decades. That's, those are my thoughts. It would take a lot for me to want to overturn the recommendations that have come up to us through the subcommittee and through the Airport Authority. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Dupont.
Thank you. I'll get to my comments, it wasn't quite done, but... So we talk about 10,000 employments. I mean, that's where we all need to get to because of federal funding. We just heard from Advanced Airlines, you know, there are some canceled flights. It's part of doing business, right? And I understand that. But their margin for error is very, very small, very small. We're talking about a max of employments of about 11,000 roughly. When you look at a nine-seat at 24 for 52 weeks in a year. When you look at a Contour Airlines or a jet service, you have a little bit bigger margin of error. You're looking roughly about 18,000. So when we're talking about that 10,000 number, I mean, those numbers are important to us. But as well as, I agree, I think there's an untapped market. You know, Advanced Airline says that they've been here, but I've only really seen them recently. They've only really done community events recently since the contract has come up. So, you know, it's, it's difficult to say they have bought into the city of Merced and its growth. And I don't think they, that they have bought into the, where the city is going, where Merced is going, and the growth that we want as a city. Competition is great. I think Contour brings something that the city is, one, never seen, but two, you know, Hawthorne is not a final destination for me, ever. And discussing with other people and community members, Hawthorne or LA is really never a final destination, they're going other places. And the other thing I picked up on was the change in ticket price between what Advance is currently charging and what their proposal is. And there was a decrease. And I was like, I wonder why? I mean, there's, there's, the market's telling them something, and could that decrease happened earlier? I don't know. But it seems as though this proposal is showing me that Advance sees something but isn't currently implementing it for their, their own benefit. And I just don't appreciate that. I think the vision for the city is growth. I think this vision for the city is looking beyond just Hawthorne or Oakland or San Francisco. I think the Phoenix route is interesting. I don't know if that's where we go currently. I think sticking with LAX and Harry Reid, but also maybe tapping the Phoenix market is still open. So, and we haven't even talked about the agreements and partnerships that I think these airlines have. Contour has three partnerships that, you know, you can have connecting flights. You know, I don't always stay in California when I fly, and a lot of people don't. So can they receive connecting flights to other places and still stay within that sterile area is important. It's a market that I think Advance has said, we're going to stick to what we're doing, and hasn't tapped the market that may be there and around Merced and even inside Merced when we're growing at 100,000. So I'll keep my comments at that, thank you.
All right, additional comments? Councilor Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentations. If I could ask Mr. Williams to come back to the podium, please. Not putting you on the spot, Mr. Williams, it won't surprise you to know that I've logged a total of zero hours flying aircraft. But I probably spent about a million hours in a seat in a plane getting somewhere I have to go. And when I don't know what to do, I ask questions until we figure it out, so. Want to pick your brain. So, again, you are our Airport Director, and you collaborated with Deputy City Manager Quintero, but you've been in the airline industry for a long time, right?
Yes, I'm your Airport Manager.
Airport Manager, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, if I call you the City Manager, that'll be a mistake if I do that, too. How long have you worked in the airline industry?
My entire profession.
Which is about how long? You look pretty young.
20 years.
Okay, and in what capacities have you served in the airline industry?
I literally started, literally loading airplanes in college, paying for school, like the bottom up to Regional Director for different airlines. Worked for four different carriers, contract carriers, municipalities, private advisement, two carriers.
What are some of the airlines that you worked for that I might have heard before?
America West, US Air, American, contracts with Southwest, Qatar, British Airways. I could keep going, internationalized, but yeah.
No, I mean, I think, I think we get the, we get the idea, thank you. And you and I and Mayor Serrato were together at the FAA with Pio Flackman, what, in May, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and you would agree with me that after Matt and I started the conversation, you talked to them for a half hour and we said nothing, is that right?
Yeah, that was great, that was a really good time, Matt. I remember we, you let me have the room, I really appreciated it. We needed it for the city to have that uninterrupted time to really get our point through at the city, again, to grow our airport. And what that does is economically helps our citizens and our constituents of the greater area to fly in and out, to cause economics, growth, business. I mean, the list just goes on if we support an airport, what it can do to the greater good. So I'm looking at this as a holistic, as what does our constituents want, not what, what do I want idea.
Exactly, and that's kind of what I'm getting at. So if everybody who's on the city's side, you've got the expertise.
I believe so, and that's why Mr. Quintero hired me.
So I'll tell you what my perspective is. I don't, I don't understand the aviation industry. I'm a frequent traveler, unfortunately, fortunately. I want to see two goals, I want to see the airport be an economic driver for our residents, and I want to see it get to the point financially where its burden on our general fund is way diminished. That's my interest, right? I could think about these different proposals from the perspective of sharing the business travel. That's not what I'm interested in. So we are currently hovering at about how many employments per year?
Currently, at this year, we're about in the high 3,000s at this point right now.
Okay, and why do I hear 10,000 employments per year as a magic number?
That's the FAA. The meeting we were in, the FAA, if you get over 10,000 employments, they grant the municipality $1.3 million in grant funding to use in the airport. And that comes from Airport AIG and AIP Project, Airport Improvement and General Projects, which would then take us off of the general fund, which is what you're trying to do.
Okay. In your experience, what are some of the strategies that regional airports will undertake to try to boost their employments?
For this type of city, essential air service, we fall within a unique area of regional service. So we would push with cargo, which our cargo is actually growing up. Our passenger employments, by getting those numbers, but then aggressive marketing and pricing for our citizens in this area to use the service. Again, they can drive, as other people have said, an hour south to Fresno. That's where I came from. But to help drive that, as we, getting those passenger numbers up, to let the people fly in and out, and by doing that, you create high stimulus of, for the populace to fly to medical procedures, to business meetings. We have the Olympics coming up. I mean, we have a lot to look at other than what we're doing currently, but also further our airport in the future economically. We can do it with any of the carriers, it's just how does the carrier want to market with the community to help push what we're trying to do here as a whole?
If one of the goals is to get people to stop driving to Sacramento and Fresno and board a plane here, how would you do that?
We have a brand-new airport we'll be opening. We have great parking. Merced is a fun, easy place to fly out of with our TSA. We're probably the most friendly airport to fly out of, so that's like my sales pitch right now.
What about code sharing?
Code share is a big deal. When you book a ticket, you're just going to go on the website like any other person, and you want to book your flight from here to wherever. And the code share does, Google Flights, any of the flights that most people would use. And that would be advantageous for the general population to use our code share with a carrier.
So are you familiar with the proposals that were submitted by Contour and by Advanced?
Yes, all of them.
So how many airline partnerships does Contour have?
They have three.
And who are they partnering with?
United, American, and Alaskan.
And how many code-sharing relationships does Advanced have?
They have Alaskan Airlines.
Are there any others?
Not that I know of.
So we heard, we heard earlier that the current administration in DC has maybe signaled they're going to cut EAS service. And we're talking about a four-year contract. Let's say EAS service goes away in two years. What, what do we need to do to maintain air service for our residents if the EAS service goes away?
To accomplish that, we would need to get our employments up, so then we are not on a radar for that. By doing that, by pushing our employments, we can then self-sustain. And not only by doing that, we would attract other carriers and airlines to come here because we are the closest city to Yosemite. And we've kind of lost sight of that. We are the closest all-weather drive to Yosemite, which is the number-two national park. And by driving those employments up, you'd have other carriers that want, want to come to Merced and do seasonal flights. We've demonstrated that other cities I've worked at by doing seasonal flights, and they thought it was crazy, and it's really taken off. So that's another thing to make sure we ensure the financial ability of the airport to not just rely on the EAS. But if we, by moving those numbers up in the bar, we attract those carriers to see that we are a player to come into and not, not just to Fresno.
So we want to have employments up for their own sake if EAS goes away?
Yes.
Okay. I noticed that all of the applicants basically had the same mix of an LA-based destination and Vegas. Do we need, I mean, why do you think that is? It seems to me that the, the Sunday flight to Vegas for the Raider game is great, but do we need something on Tuesday afternoon?
Tuesday afternoon at like 2:00, it doesn't, we don't fill it up, so it doesn't make sense to rent a plane empty.
Is it, in your experience, would it be more advantageous for Merced to be able to experiment with different routes other than Southern California and Las Vegas?
Yes.
And that maybe goes to your idea of the seasonal mix?
Correct.
Sometimes you want to go to Las Vegas for a Raider game, sometimes you want to go to Phoenix to fly back east?
Yes.
Okay. I'll stop my questions there. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. It felt like that.
No, he's ready for cross-exam now.
Mayor Pro Tim Boyle. What else? You know, I think we got, I think we had difficult decisions. Do you have, I think both sides make compelling points. The more flights, more available flights that Advance offers is a big thing, but also the, the regional jets with more capacity. I might count 12 round trips a week on a 30-seater, 720 total seats, and then 24 round trips on the eight-seater, or 384. So the capacity is a lot greater, but I guess the point was made, too, by Advance, I think it's a good point, too, is, you know, is our market ready for that? Or not? That's a big question. And, but again, the more frequent flights is a good thing. I think the, the mix of Los Angeles and Las Vegas is, is probably our best bet. Vegas is, Los Angeles or LAX is the fifth big, biggest airport in the country. Las Vegas is eighth. Hawthorne, too, a lot to be said about Hawthorne because of the ease to get in and out. I think a lot of that depends, too, on your final destinations. I think we got a lot of people, especially UC students and other folks who are traveling to LA as their final destination. It's a good way to do it with a short flight. Phoenix doesn't make a lot of sense to me at all because I just think Vegas is better in, in every way. Vegas is a superior hub and Vegas is a superior destination. Cheaper flights coming out of Vegas. Vegas is a busier airport than Phoenix. I've seen, you know, to the point was made earlier that Advance hasn't done a lot of community outreach. It's been my experience to the contrary. I think they've been, I mean, I'm in a different position being able to see it through the city lens, but I think they've been a very good partner and have done a lot of community outreach. They've sponsored events, they've been present, present in other places, too. I think in terms of that being part of the community, they've done all we could ask for. The employments in '22 were at 33, 3,335, have gradually increased to 3,700. Last year, 4,777, and this year on pace probably to do a little better than that. So getting close to 5,000. You and Bar, I actually had a question. The, there's a, a big jump in de-employments this year? Is there anything that explains that? The numbers, de-employments are up pretty significantly, almost double last year.
Of people coming into Merced?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just the, the flow of, of traffic, but more and more people are using the product, so. Yeah. And why I'm here, just one quick point.
Sure.
You, you do have to waive your right to schedule service or alternate EAS for the other two, and I don't think that's a point that's been, been brought up. So it's just something to really consider.
Okay. Thank you. I think, too, yeah, a lot of other factors, too, the frequency of flights, but then the jets. A lot of people are going to prefer the bigger jets. They, they have a safer feel, I think in a lot of instances, less turbulence. But also, the smaller planes also could have a more private plane feel, but I think the majority of people would prefer the, the feel of a bigger jet. I mean, price, the biggest complaint I've heard so far about Advance, and I think that maybe one thing holding down the employments is just the roughly $160 one-way ticket price has been too much. They've, they've taken steps to rectify that by offering $80 flights Tuesday and Wednesday. And then now in this proposal, dropping the flight, dropping the price to $75, I think will make it a lot more attractive to folks. So price is a big concern as well. So, long way of saying, I think I, I'm still open-minded, even at this point. I, I think we have a difficult decision. I think we have a good thing, having good options and good competition, and it's a reflection, I think, of the good work, you know, Rhett and Frank and, and Karen and their team are doing. And I, obviously, too, with, with the new airport coming, this is really the time to, to, to double down and hopefully really start delivering an even better product. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You did a good job of summing things up. Does it make any sense to do a straw poll by number and see where we stand as a body?
Sure. If you want, you could lead it if you want. I don't know if anybody's going to answer.
By show of hands for option number one, SkyWest charter?
Anybody like SkyWest?
By show of hands, number two, Contour Airlines?
Contour preference for Contour?
And by show of hands, number three, Advanced Airlines?
Okay. So we're seeing.
So the, the majority is for option two. And with, with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion to accept the recommendation, option two.
Clarification? Can I make?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think we're doing a ranking system. If I.
Yeah, let's get.
Mr. Williams, can you come to the?
Let's get Rhett and/or Frank up. Do we want, in the past, we've delivered a.
So because the DOT is making the decision, we're providing a recommendation to the DOT. So you were wanting a ranking system of the airlines. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, we're giving them a ranking, so then the DOT would make the decision.
Okay.
So do we waive Frank's case?
Let me modify my motion then.
Thank you, Councilman. Please know, if you just want to narrow it down to one, you have that option, too. And you can specify in order, if it's LAX and Harry Reid Airport, you could state that. LAX, Phoenix, you could also state that, too. So it's one or multiple. That's up to you.
Okay. So we go one, and then, but when we make the recommendation, we also have to specify the routes as well?
Correct.
That's correct.
And then we could also recommend the same airline at multiple spots with different routes?
Yes, they're just looking for chronological, because then they're going to review all the bids.
Okay. And we can do, make one recommendation, two recommendations, up to how many?
Up to three.
Okay.
Yeah. But as Frank said, you could do one.
Okay. All right. I would, I'm actually going to make a motion. If there's, appear to be support for Contour. If, I would support Contour one, LAX to Las Vegas, and then Advance two, Hawthorne, Las Vegas. If that's, I'm just throwing that out there.
And another option I think we could do as well is Contour one, LAX to Las Vegas, Contour two, LAX to Phoenix, because contrary to, I think, the mayor, I, there may be a market for Phoenix. And Advance Airlines three, Hawthorne to Vegas.
Okay.
Just my suggestion.
All right. Yeah, again, I mean, my point, Vegas is, there's no, Vegas seems to be better than Phoenix, shorter flight. I'll give you a second.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Shorter flight from here to there, cheaper flight from here to there, busier airport, more options, and cheaper flights coming out of Vegas than, uh, Phoenix. Vegas is a premier domestic hub with cheap flights going everywhere. Prove me wrong. I should probably shouldn't have said prove me wrong, but no, I'm sorry for that.
Phoenix, I believe, is a, a hub to American, so that's why it's Phoenix. Because of that code share, American can be connected to, through Phoenix.
Okay.
Let me modify that mo, my motion if I may.
Sure.
To, to send a recommendation of Contour with LAX and Las Vegas, followed by Advanced, Hawthorne to, Hawthorne and Las Vegas.
Okay.
If you would.
Just those two.
Okay. Would you accept my, an amendment of throwing in LAX and Phoenix as three from Contour?
Yes, as three.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
Okay, the motion by Councilmember Harris and a second by Councilmember Dupont. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. Okay, and the motion passes with Mayor Pro Tim Boyle voting no.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, agenda item L2, discuss proposed goals, priorities, town halls, budget, and financial fiscal year timeline.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Councilmember Smith wanted us to bring back council goals, priorities, financial timeline, and planning proposal based on discussion, and then ultimately with council direction. You provided some information of what you thought it would look like, and so we did put together a proposed timeline and what possibly a two-year budget planning would look like. So first, we'll talk about goals, priorities, and financial timeline, and this is probably what would impact you the most as how you would see things come forward to the council in a, in a fiscal year. So currently, I have presented the five-year forecast typically in November. In January, we would set town hall dates and then hold those town hall meetings between January and February, just depending on everybody's schedules. The year-end and mid-year update would come in February, second meeting of February. Council goals and priority setting sessions would happen in February. Then ultimately, council would adopt those council goals and priorities typically around March. And then there would be budget presentation and one-time allocation recommendations at the second meeting in May. We would present budget again in the first meeting of June, and then ultimately hold the budget hearing and adoption, second meeting of June. So based on just the feedback we received from the council, we have proposed somewhat of a new timeline. So there was discussion about starting to set those town hall dates early because it's hard for you all to manage the schedule when we do it so late. So we thought in November, we would set the town hall dates. We would present the five-year forecast and a year-end update together in January. There was discussion about the city manager actually proposing some recommended goals and priority in advance for you to review, and so that would come out in January. We would then actually hold town hall meetings in January. And then in the meeting in January, so probably have some discussions about the council goals and priorities, and then ultimately have additional discussions and adoption in February of those goals and priorities. There would be, based on a two-year budget planning, we would come, what we would now call the new mid-year update, and then also present the next fiscal year's one-time allocation recommendations in the second meeting of May. And then we would present the budget in the first meeting of June, and then have the budget hearing and adoption in the second meeting. So there's discussion about a two-year budget planning. And so just to, as a reminder, you know, currently, our charter requires budget adoption annually. There was discussions about a potential biennial budget, which means every two years, that budget would be adopted, adopted for two years. But it would require a ballot measure, and the council did not have interest in actually going to the ballot to do that. But there was discussion about planning for a two-year budget, so not necessarily adopting a two-year budget, but planning for a two-year budget, but still coming back to adopt each year, each budget individually each year. So under budget planning, year one, you know, administration would plan a two-year operating budget cycle and only adopt a one-year budget. And then in year two of the cycle, we would review the second-year plan, revise, propose the one-time capital expenses, and then adopt, again, adopt a, a budget in that second year. So with that proposal, the city manager and the deputy city manager and I sat down to talk about what that calendar would look like. You guys received very detailed calendars in your packets, but I just wanted to go over it kind of in a summarized way here tonight. But typically, our calendar would start in December for budget. With the way that we would propose this cycle in a fiscal year, we would actually start our budget calendar in September. So essentially, if we, if you direct us to move to this, we would start as of today or probably tomorrow. There would be several additional action items for capital project planning. Department goals and objectives would start in December so that it could coincide with what the city manager would recommend as goals and priorities for you. And then goals and priorities would be drafted and provided to the council in January. And this would include a list of recommended capital projects. Town hall, I'm sorry, town halls will be still held in January, and then you would discuss goals and priorities, request any revisions to what the city manager has proposed, and then ultimately adopt in February. The plan, the planning or the operating budget, we would plan for that for two years, so for '26, '27, and '27, '28. And then we would come to you in May to recommend the one-time capital expenses for fiscal year '26, '27. In year two, it pretty much would look the same. The only real difference is going to be in step three, at least from an administration perspective. Because you would still, we would still start in September. You would still get the goals and priorities that are being recommended to you in January. You would still provide any changes and adopt that in February. We would still present to you in May, and then again in June, you would adopt the budget, the second-year budget. The only difference would be from a planning perspective internally, where December through April, finance and city manager would review with departments what they had created in that first year for the second year, and then discuss any changes that might be needed, and maybe make, you know, small revisions, and then finalize that as the city manager proposes budget. So that, that is kind of the vision that we saw based on the discussion that we had with council a couple of meetings ago. So if you have any questions or you feel there's changes or something completely different, welcome to hear your thoughts.
Any questions? Counselor Dupont.
No questions, but I think this timeline best suits kind of what our needs are as well as what the public's needs are. I think one thing to point out is in January, city manager providing council with the recommended goals and priorities, and then having town halls after that. It provides for. It provides for, uh, a more meaningful conversation at those town halls and maybe a little bit more of a focused, uh, look at town halls. So I, I think this is a good change and allows us to be a little bit more of ahead of, ahead of schedule than we were this previous year.
Councilor Harris.
Thank you. I, um. I can't help but think that it creates an appearance of us not. Drawing our goals and priorities from the input of the public, which I think is what we are, one of the things we're elected to do. By the time it gets, could you go back to the original schedule that you had up?
Nope.
That one. Another proposed, uh, the recommended goals and priorities come down and we hold the town hall meetings. Is that where we're just discussing those goals and priorities or? Do we let the, the? Public give us fresh input on what they think the goals, their goals and priorities should be and what we should do? The other thing is. I think we tend to turn goals into priorities into tasks and projects. And they really shouldn't be, they should be very high-level goals and priorities. It's a separate process to prioritize what are we gonna do over the next year, project-wise? And I don't think we do a, the best job of doing that because we mix. The high-level goals and priorities with what are we gonna do for a year and where are those priorities? And I think they're two separate processes. We, we end up with a list of things that are never gonna get done in one year. And aren't really prioritized by need. So I think we just need to do a better job of separating that out so that, uh. Goals and priorities stop at a high level. And then there's another process to determine what are we gonna do with our budget for a year? What can we, what can we do with the money that we have for a year? Do we wanna do roads? Do we wanna do, um, sidewalks and things like that? Those are, those are items that I think we should look at in advance rather than try to catch up with over the year. I don't know if I'm describing that as well as I could, but, uh, it just seems when we talk about goals and priorities, it devolves into. Actual, um, tasks. And then we get mired in how are we gonna do this and what are we gonna do after that? And we lose the focus of the goals and priorities. Back to my original, uh, issue. I think, and I've heard from my constituents is that, is that, uh, you're an elected official and it's your job to come up with the goals and priorities. And it's the, uh, city manager's job to, um, turn those into tasks and implement them with a, with a focus in mind of. What you've brought back from the town hall meetings. Anyway, I am probably in a minority here, but it's what I wanted to, to, uh, speak to.
I think you make a lot of good points. Councilor Smith.
Thank you. First of all, um, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, for an excellent presentation and, and doing the work that we asked you to do and I started. I guess there's two separate issues. In terms of the, the budget process, and I think I said that last time, since I no longer wish to explore a two-year budget cycle. I think we're kind of in the realm where the city manager and the finance officer can. We're an advisor consent role, and if this works better for them and their team, um, I'm all for it. I think where, where the rubber meets the road with us is, as Councilman Harris said, the goals and priorities process. And I, I listened to him talk and I think he's raising all the right questions. My suspicion is that he and I are really on all fours together, standing in the same sandbox, just maybe using some different terminology. As I said the last time we talked about this issue, I really didn't think from a practical perspective, our goals and priorities process worked as well as it should have. And quite honestly, where we got caught up was in creating the document. I mean, to me, the important things are that we hear from our community. Frankly, town halls, sometimes they're fantastic, sometimes they're not helpful. I think it's a top 10 way to get feedback from the community, but it's not the top five. But regardless, it's a way we can all sit in the same room and get the same feedback. The important thing is that we, as the elected officials co- collect and aggregate community feedback. Then we have a session, like a, a focus group session where the city manager could then hear our thoughts and comments informed by the community. The problem, as I said, is then distilling that into a document. I've been on, this is, this would be the third or fourth time I've done this. Every single time the doc looks different, comes together differently. Last time, we ended up with a document that was sort of like everything that staff is doing. In prior years, it's become sort of like a, uh, see if I can get an issue to get four votes and now it becomes something the city has to do. I don't think either approach is correct. My idea was, we have a council manager form of government. And I take Mr. Harris's point, you know, this is another conversation, but I think. Our, our local structure of government and what the community expects from us is outpaced what the charter has actually delegated to us. But where we're standing today is a council manager form of government. And so if we pretend as if we're painting on a blank slate. And we're not, we're not meshing our personal goals and priorities as elected officials with what the city is already doing. What the city has already initiatives and priorities have started years before and have to continue. Then we're kind of just kidding ourselves. I think it's better, we don't have to call it recommended goals and priorities, it could be something else. It could be just rough draft of whatever. If we don't also under- it's equally important for us to understand what the city manager is doing as it is to hear from the community what they want us to be doing. Otherwise, we can't synthesize those two things together into effective government. So, um, we can talk terminology and, uh, you know, I'm not wedded to this. I'm open to, to other ways to have this conversation. But I do think the correct approach is to city manager and his team get something down on paper, could be bullet points, could be whatever it is. We hear from the public, we have our goals and priority session. And then, you know, I think the city manager should synthesize. Everything back into a, frankly, a two-page document that we then discuss in open session again and decide it's final. And that has to happen before we start the budget discussion in May. So anyway, I actually think we're in violent agreement, just maybe terminology and, uh, you know, where we, where we put our points of emphasis needs to be ironed out.
The phrase six and one half dozen the other kept coming to mind when you guys were sharing your points. Mayor Pro Tim Boyle.
Yeah, I have, I agree with some of the other comments. I think just looking at the current and the proposed timelines, I think not having the goal, the council goal and priority setting session. We definitely need to have that. Um, and I look at this in two different ways. I kind of like that the city manager does provide us with goals and priorities because a lot of times we come into the studying session. Where we have our directors and leads of their departments and they have their own goals and priorities. And then we don't see them until way after the town halls. And I think if we present these golden priorities to the, while we're having the town halls. A lot of the issues that our residents are talking about can already, we can only say, already say, these are our goal and priority. We already see this, we understand you, we see it, we wanna work on it. But then at the town halls, there are those times where people bring up things that we don't realize are taking place. And it's kind of, you know, the city manager sits down with, um, our staff, figures out what their goals and priorities are, present it to us so we understand it. Do the town halls, then have a strategic sit-down where we all talk about it. Cause I really feel like that in the last few years is we sit down on that Saturday and it's just information overload. And a lot of it is crossover. And I think just streamlining that list will make a lot of us a lot happier and make our jobs easier. So that's how I kind of looked at this. And then also in just the last five years of doing this, um, I think it would streamline it a lot easier, especially in the beginning of it. And I like that we're gonna set the town hall dates in November.
Councilor Jean.
For first thing I want to mention is similar to what council member Smith is talking about with the two-year budget. I think that's admin. Planning, and so I don't think it's something that council should be completely involved in. Um, so that should just be whether or not the finance department wants to do a two-year planning or not. It's not for council to make that decision up here. In terms of town hall dates, I think we should set them now, just make it third and fourth. Wednesdays and Thursdays in January and be done with it. Rather than looking at our schedule at that time and trying to figure it out, kind of like how we set, um, council meetings. Just having us set dates, use those dates forever, right? In terms of the process, I tend to agree more with council member Harris here. I think it should start from council. And we, we, we start with what we have, what we hear from community, write it up, give it to city manager. He then works with department heads, create their own list together incorporating what we have, comes back, goes to town halls. I like what we did, uh, what Chris and Parks and Recs did at the open house where you have all these poster boards and community members could write whatever they want on there. Uh, associated to those topics, right? And it would give us a good insight in one documenting what community wants. But really let us see, right, that process. And it comes back to city manager to organize it all together and then comes back to us for final discussion. That's my thoughts.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I tend to be in alignment for the most part with the councilor Jean. I think there's a, um, it's kind of a blend, which I think is, is probably a good course where instead of the city manager providing us with recommended goals and priorities, which I think is kind of. Backwards is the way it's, it's supposed to work, we're the policy board, we're the policymakers. Um, but the, the city manager has the expertise and also, um, has the benefit of being in the building every day. And working directly with the department heads. So if it was something more along the lines of city manager provides council with department head or department goals and priorities, which department. Each, you know, the public works is seeking this, police is seeking this, I think that's probably a better way to do it. And that gets to the other issue that was raised where, um, you know, and the point of the strategic planning session is, is to do this as well, is to do a better job. Having communication and blending and syncing up council and staff. So that's kind of the challenge and that's, I think that's where the process, where the, the structure of good government comes in, the more we can sync, uh. Staff and the departments with council. But if there's something more like that with department goals and priorities, as opposed to the city manager saying, look, this is what I think you guys should do, which I think is probably a little out of. No, Scott wouldn't necessarily even wanna do that. Might be a little out of the lane. And then coming back for goals and priorities after town halls like we do. I mean, at that point, council sets its goals and priorities. Um, but I think the two points that were made already, which I agree with the two points are one, you know, what's the document gonna look like? And that document, it's varied over the years, something more general, something more aspirational to, you know, last year it was more like a work list. So I don't think there's anyone that's right, anyone that's not right, but, um, you know, what's, having clear expectation of what that's gonna look like. And then two, having clear expectations around the strategic planning session and then streamlining it a little better. Uh, so that it, it can serve a very valuable function, but also sometimes, as I think Sarah noted, it can feel like information overload and there can be a lot of. You know, just sometimes a lot of talk, but I think it's a good, I think the talk too is a good way for us just to be able to interact in kind of a free forum with each other. Not in a way that, that's necessarily sets policy there, but all but stimulates future conversations between us, between department heads as well too. Just kind of having that free talk, at least as a portion of it, is very valuable. Councilor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a, um, I have an idea to run by. On the proposed, if we took out the city manager, provide council with recommended goals and priorities and, and put that in a different place and a different way. We hold the town hall meetings, we adopt the council's golden prior- goals and priorities. And then the city manager provides the council in conjunction with talks with department heads. With actual projects that support the recommended goals and priorities. And brings that back to the council for adoption. And we say, we can do these projects that need to be done, they fall into your recommended goals and priorities. And here's the budget for those tasks that follow you. Make any sense out of that?
No, it makes sense. I don't know if, um, I don't know, I don't know if it's the best course, but. Councilor Dupont.
Yeah, I don't know if I would be in favor of that. We don't run the city, um, in the sense of we're not the manager of the city, we have a city manager. So us telling, this is the goals and priorities, you guys as department heads fit into place what we tell you what to do. As goals and priorities, uh, that's a stretch for me in the sense of what our role is in a city manager form of government. So I, I would actually, and I, I agree with the, the mayor in the sense of. The city manager provide council with recommended goals and priorities. I'm okay with, you know, the city manager bringing a goals and priorities list that is combined of what the department heads are, are looking for as goals and priorities. Um, and we can provide our input as to what the, those goals and priorities, if we wanna change or, uh, not change, um, or add. Um, but I think, but we have department heads for a reason. Uh, they're the experts in their field and we have them in their place for a reason. So, you know, I, that's where we can go in and say, this is a priority to us of X, Y and Z in public works or X, Y and Z and, and parks and recre- uh, recreation, right? I would include the, the se- the setting session, probably after the town hall meetings. I think it's a meaningful conversation of not only what that year looks like, but also future planning. I, we had a lot of discussion about public safety and public works facilities at our, our study session. So I would probably include that after the, the town hall meetings. But I would keep, the city manager provides us with, you know, some form of goals and priorities if it's from the departments before the town halls. Because, look, we can discuss at a town halls and it's something that people can discuss, or they can discuss other things. It, it, it provides both avenues for the community to talk about. And just provides them another opportunity to talk about and make comments on goals and priorities, uh, during a public session, so.
Councilor Smith.
Thank you, I appreciate the discussion. I think maybe we're getting caught up in terminology and then I'll, I'll take the blame for that. I probably started with that the last time. To me, this proposed schedule by Ms. Rodriguez, Ms. Rodriguez works. Instead of city manager providing us with recommended goals and priorities, I agree, that's not the right term. Maybe that's just a city hall preview. And we get it contemporaneously with starting getting feedback from the community in town halls. But I mean, I think we have to know where the city manager and his team are going as we get into quote, goals and priorities. So I mean, to me, let's not get hung up on the terminology, nobody's saying we're abdicating our role. It's just a matter of where to put the, where to put the order of operation. I would tend to say we, we give this proposed schedule a shot this next year and we have a discussion afterwards and see how it went.
Mr. Brett.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mayor. I, I do think some of this is semantics. Every year for the budget, we prepare MGOs, right? And they're reviewed by, by our budget. And so, uh, we don't make a big deal about it, but, uh, to me, this is like your MGOs. That's kind of the same thing that we're talking about here. Just a matter of do, how much more attention do you want to draw into the process for, for drafting those? I wanna make it very clear that, um, I think what we do is in line with what your priorities are. And I think what we do is in sync with where you want the community and where you want the city to go. We put a lot of focus on your needs through our subcommittees. If we didn't, we wouldn't try so hard to have these meetings, right? We wanna get your feedback, we wanna have all the time in the world to see what you wanna do and how you wanna do it. By no means is this, you know, my ship and we're gonna do it my way, this is, that's not how the cities run, I'll be very clear. This is your guys' city, I'm here to implement what you wanna do. And I think everyone here in the audience and that works for the city knows that for a fact. We're not trying to change that through anything we're doing through this. We're trying to make this process more responsive to get it to where you want things to go. We're open for update, we're open to do it in a way that, that makes sense for everybody. I would just say this. It is difficult for us as staff to be mediators and to be note takers and to be, um, creating. to be mediators and to be note takers and to be creating this process when we're involved at the meetings for your goals and priorities, right? It's, it's an art, right? I mean, I didn't get trained in that in MPA program. That's not what we do, right? I'm an implementer, right? I do other things. So I also just would be very honest that I think the town hall meetings that we have, you are always open for, for public comments, right? Every night we have a meeting here, you get feedback on priorities from the community, social media, your text. There's so many ways to get priorities to you that I think in some aspects, you don't need to just focus only on the town hall meetings. There's so many ways to get it all throughout the year. We, maybe we, we put too much of emphasis on just those two or three meetings. I think we need to add some structure to it. I, I like the idea, but I heard about maybe having more things to consider, interactive opportunities of the meeting, something different we've, we've not done. I think if it's just, you all listen for the time being, it's not very productive. It's not productive to us. I'll just be honest. I think there's a better way. If you're more, if you ask for more feedback about specific things, you're going to get more out of from the public. That's just how I see it.
All right, so. You're getting on a roll. You're starting to get on a roll right there. Yeah, all right. Who's got a good idea? I think we're, I think everybody's, I'm pretty much, we're all saying the same thing again, just in a slightly different way. And it, probably, all right, well, if we have some, the proposed, but then instead of city manager writing council with recommended goals and priorities, now that language could change and it could be department priorities, department update, something like that. I think that's better. And that really, that addresses, I think we have very good, we have a very involved council and we have very good department head, council and city manager communication. I think we're all, we do very, very well in all those regards. But that's probably a better way to phrase it. And then, goals and priority session, we don't need to necessarily make that decision right now, but just maybe a little better understanding going in as to what the discussion is going to be about. And the point Councilmember Smith made where people are kind of angling to try to get to four votes, it's not, that's not what it's for. Never been what it's for. I don't, I think it's just, it's not the right setting for it. But it's a good kind of free form discussion and it's good. I think there's been a lot of value of it as we lead into budget as well. But just my thoughts, if anybody would.
Second.
We'll make a motion. Yeah, not supposed to make motions, but I'll make that motion.
All right.
Comments, public comment?
Oh yeah, sorry, sorry. Actually, we were sorry. We didn't realize anybody was still here. I saw Arturo fall asleep and then he woke up and laughed.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor, city manager, and city attorney. In recent months, community members I meet with routinely have raised concerns about the current budget timeline, in particular, community input workshops that the city hosts in late January and in February. And residents would like to see the city's town halls be dedicated to discussing community projects in relation to the annual budget. It's just that sometimes it's not advertised that way. And so although we agree that it's great for community to get to know their representatives and talk about some other things, at the very least, we would like to see that they're used as an opportunity for community members to make budget requests, or that the city commits to reflect community concerns in the budget as well as in projects and programs that address those concerns. To ensure that the community has enough time to communicate these concerns and needs, we urge you to begin seeking community input earlier. And that can look in a variety of different ways. If the concern is that newly elected officials will be handcuffed to previous councils' decisions, then paper and digital surveys can be offered in multiple languages prior to the start of the new year, especially at end of the year events that take place throughout the community. And there are a multitude of ways, like I mentioned, that community input can be solicited without council having to make any decisions, including staff holding some of these input meetings prior to the new year. On the subject of a two-year planning period, there are profound concerns that this process would significantly limit community input and transparency. During the August 4th city council meeting, direction was provided to staff to come up with the two-year planning cycle for operational expenditures for the departments. However, staff also mentioned that council would review the budget in May with operational budget by department, that that would be ready to go. And the only action council would take would to be, to set the amount of community funding for the two-year planning period and come back in the midpoint, which would be one year later, to determine which projects would get funding. In other words, if the city sets aside X amount of funding for roads over a two-year period, and in year one, there are road projects that go over budget, that leaves less funding for year two projects. The concern here is that this would be leaving the city to fill the gaps of any underfunded projects in the year two that the budget didn't account for at the beginning of the budget process, or simply plan for less projects in year two. Going down that same road, this process would create a risk that the same sort of projects would get funded, or that would be the only kinds to get consistently funded. And other projects that would challenge the status quo would likely receive little to no funding to avoid creating any funding gaps in year two. If the city does not set or plan on setting a funding amount at the beginning of the budget process for two years, and then come back to allocate it in the midpoint to different projects, please provide some clarification. That would be helpful to know. With consideration of these concerns, we hope that if the council wishes to make this process more efficient and less redundant, that the city can instead ensure that community input opportunities are started earlier and that the strategic planning session is mainly based on community input. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, we had a motion and a second. Is that, do we need that or do we, is the direction good enough?
It's just asking for direction.
So I think we're good. Venus, do you have your directions? So Brad, do you have your direction?
Yes. So it's essentially, it's this new proposed, I will, we'll just replace council, or sorry, city manager provide, and it'll just be the department goals and priorities. And then we'll add the goal and priority setting session somewhere between January and February. It's a very tight timeline, but we'll, we'll do our best. I think we always try to do that. It's just always ends up kind of in March somewhere, right? But we'll, we'll try.
In the hands of a less talented woman, it would be a problem.
Setting everything in November will probably help, right? Maybe we'll set the, the setting session in November too, so that we guys have the plan for the next few months. That might help too.
All right.
Agenda item L3, request add item to future agenda.
On my right, Mayor Proton Boyle.
Nothing this evening.
Councilor Dupont.
Nothing tonight.
Councilor Jean.
Nothing.
Councilmember Harris.
Nothing tonight.
Councilor Smith.
I do have a suggestion. Just preface it by saying that I was pleased to see the, the state legislature's action to fully fund Merced to Bakersfield. I was fully prepared to be sitting down here calling for council to reevaluate our admin tier harness contract and request a closed session discussion of reimbursement. I'm glad that I can hold off on that. I would still make a suggestion as I get into a trust but verified mode, that if the city's not doing this now, we should have some kind of budget code for expenses that we incur that are to comply with and benefit from high-speed rail. So that if we end up in this situation again, we can better account for what we spent in reliance on the city's, on the state's plan to come to Merced. So I don't know if that really needs council direction, but that's my suggestion.
City manager's taking notes. Mr. Deanna, anything for your future agenda? Nothing for me either.
Okay, agenda item L4, city council comments.
Mr. Deanna, we'll go down to you, sir. Council comments, any activities, that, brief announcement on activities you've attended on behalf of the city and a brief announcement on future community events and activities.
I guess if, I guess if taking care of, my wife is having fun. She's doing very well, by the way. I don't dance with her yet, but she gets around and walks. Matter of fact, she likes to leave her cane in the car. And I says, if you're going to go into the grocery store, wherever you're going to go and take it with you, at least take it with you. So she, she's coming along very well. She had eye surgery a couple of weeks ago and that's coming along pretty good too. Now, if she'll give me some time, I'll be able to call the doctor and find out when I can get in and have him look at my shoulder again. Thank you.
No, thank you, sir. Councilor Smith.
The Phoenix Collective is bringing back Total Drama Island in a couple of weekends. You all might remember that Mayor Serratos, who arrives with Josh Pedrosa and I, last season served as cannon fodder. I'm pleased to, to report that our own Sarah Boyle will be competing. P-Bid executive director Gloria Valdivinos, who left, is also on the roster. I fully expect Councilmember Boyle to get into the final four, unlike Serrato and Smith. He didn't make it past the second episode. So best of luck and I'll be cheering you on.
Thank you. You know, they created a new rule because of, well, Matt and Josh, actually. They created a new rule. They, they brought a new rule on just because of you two.
You gonna tell us what it is? You can lose this.
It was something with you guys not wanting to vote.
Oh, I kind of remember that one.
They cheated the whole time.
Surprise, surprise. They didn't want to vote.
Mike, oh, forget the one. Councilor Harris.
Well, I think there's been some senior discrimination. I did not get invited to participate in that probably because I knew that I would, you know, completely dominate. But since I can't, I fully support our Mayor Proton Boyle and I hope she kicks everybody's you-know-what. That's it.
Councilor Jean.
Howdy, fair.
Dupont.
Thank you, Mayor. Was able to attend Boys and Girls Club CEO meet and greet, as well as the highly-attended Merced City Parks and Recreation Open House and Ice Cream Social. What a great community event that was put on. I want to thank the Fire Department, the Police Department for coming out to my Ice Cream Social and the community. And last but not least, the celebration of the completion of the Child's Multi-Use Pathway, which has been a project highly-desired in District One and, and completed now. So now that we have a, a safe pathway to both Golden Valley High School and Weaver Middle School for our students in Southeast Merced.
No, it's a great project. Good time to come. Mayor Proton Boyle, next winner of Drama Island.
Oh my gosh, the pressure is on. I need to raise money so I, so that I get the immunity so then I for sure will win. But yeah, I'm looking forward to it. There's a, a good amount of, good, great people that are going to be on there, new people that I've met for the first, first time and people that I've known for a while. So hearing the stories how some people have not, are ended their friendship, I'm thankful that there's no one on there that I'm super close with. So I don't think that's going to happen. So yes, we'll be on Drama Island this season. It begins September 28th. And I think season tickets are already sold out, but I'm trying to find out how you can get individual tickets. So I'll try to share that on social media. And if anyone wants to know more information, please let me know. Last two weeks were definitely busy. I just want to thank my colleagues and the staff for the high-speed rail meeting that we had two weeks ago. And really glad that we were able to sit down and have the conversations with them and how it means, what it means to Merced and having high-speed rail. UC Merced had their 20th celebration. Also attended the Parks and Rec and Open Space, Open House, Child's Avenue, walking almost to Parsons, wasn't expecting that. But great to see that it is open and our kids and even cyclists that are using it, they have a safer route going down Child. Attended the Merced County Food Bank, sharing the Harvest Event where they raised $170,000. Mayor Serratos was part of the Chili Cook-Off. I was going to see if he would mention what his prize was. But yeah, it was a great event, one of my, one of my favorite events, especially with the food bank being in District Five. I love to support them. And want to congratulate Merced PD again, just with the awards for our K-9 units. But also, this morning you guys announced the homicide arrest. So just keep up the good work and we're really proud of you. So thank you.
UC Merced 20th anniversary. UC Merced's also their first foray into Division II NCAA sports, so the soccer game against Simon Fraser, that was, that was a lot of fun to go to. Just like last year finished last in Drama Island, I finished last in the Food Bank Chili Cook-Off competition. Also my boat in the Lau Boat Race finished last as well. Very, anything if not consistent.
Hey, good thing you, you got first for mayor.
I got the only thing everyone. Now the, but a big thanks to the county and everyone else involved, in particular, the Lau Association with the organizing the Lau Boat Race, really incredible event for the second year in a row at Lake Yosemite. Also, the, the Hispanic Chamber is always with the, the independent Mexican Independence Day celebration yesterday, also the Mercado in the last, in the first week of September as well. Couple upcoming events, UC Merced has their community partner event, so different organizations in town, all the different community groups can come out on the 17th from 10 to 2 at UC Merced. Our Ferentz Park Cleanup is Saturday, the 20th, 8:45 a.m., goes to 11. We're going to prep the park for Chris and his team the next day, Sunday, 8 o'clock. They're doing the annual run to raise money for General Vangpaup Park. And then a lot of good events coming up to the downtown town hall. And then we have two other cleanups scheduled, November 8th and, or number, first ever highly, November 8th at Applegate. And just want to thank everybody from staff, from our, our lobbyists, members of the council, council member Smith, Mayor Proton Boyle, everybody who was involved in the high-speed rail discussions, our elected officials too, Assemblywoman Soria, Senator Caballero, Congressman Gray, everybody behind the scenes doing a lot of work to try to, to fight for Merced. So really neat to see, neat to see everybody rally. And it's, it's kind of fun to see us playing on that big stage too. I think we do, we more than hold our own. And we got a lot of people who can, you know, handle that level, I think, and, you know, and that, and that project, that's kind of at the top of state and national politics as well. And, you know, I think we all, everybody handle themselves very well. So just big, big thanks to everybody for that. Ready?
Okay, agenda item M and German.
Your motion is adjourned.
Second.
Is it Dupont? So I have a motion by Councilmember Dupont and a second by Mayor Proton Boyle. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. And the motion passes unanimously.